I'd like to call the meeting to order. As we gathered this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and our community that we are meeting on the traditional territory of the First Nations. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history. We are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. Please stand for a moment of silent reflection. Please be seated. Mr. Kelly, could we have roll call, please? Thank you. Warden, good morning. Councillor Bennett.
Here.
Thank you. Councillor Bros.
Present.
Councillor Doncaster.
Present.
Councillor Donohue.
Here.
Warden Eamon.
Present.
Councillor Jardini.
Present.
Councillor Grills.
Present.
Councillor Yon. Councillor Lynch.
Here.
Councillor McKenzie.
Here.
Councillor Mayville.
Present.
Councillor Murphy.
Here.
Councillor Nicholson.
Present.
Councillor Service.
Here.
Councillor Watt.
Present.
Councillor Weir.
Here.
Councillor Wilmer.
Present.
Thank you, Warden. You do have quorum. Thank you. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none, thank you. If I could have a mover for the adoption of the minutes in November 29, 2023, and December 12, 2023. Moved by the member from North Algonquin will before, second by the member from Laurentian Valley. All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you very much, council. During the months of December and January, I attended thirty-six meetings on county business. On December 1, I joined Councillor Murphy and Development and Property Committee Chair Bros at a press conference in Eaganville for a funding announcement by the Honorable Graydon Smith, Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry, along with John Yakubuski, MPP for Renfrew, Niffisink, Pembroke, to recognize two local forestry companies in Renfrew County. Laverne Heideman and Sons, in partnership with the Harvest Bio Industrial Group from Burlington, will receive one hundred and twenty thousand to study and increase the use of underutilized hardwoods to produce biochemicals and other products. Rollsberg Forest Products, Inc., will receive one hundred thousand to improve supply chain resiliency, support forest sector diversification, and reduce greenhouse gas emissions by exploring energy production using forest biomass. On January 12, I attended the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus inaugural meeting held in Kingston. I've been re-elected as chair for this coming year. Peterborough County Warden Bonnie Clark was acclaimed as vice-chair of the caucus for 2024. It will be a great pleasure to serve alongside Warden Clark once again. During the meeting, the members reviewed the history and accomplishments of the caucus, which include the paramedic service refresh report, the refreshed policy papers on housing and infrastructure, the next steps for the seven-in-seven regional housing strategy, and engagement of ERN to develop an implementation report on housing. From January 20 to 24, I attended, along with other members of county council and county staff, the Roma Annual Conference in Toronto. During the conference, I participated in the following Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus events: delegation meetings with the Honorable Kinga Sirma, Minister of Infrastructure; delegation with the Liberal Caucus; delegation with the NDP Caucus; a delegation with the Honorable Michael Calandra, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing; delegation with the Ministry of Long-Term Care, Parliamentary Assistant John Jordan. A list of delegation meetings for the County of Renfrew is included in the Finance and Admin Committee Report. I would like to thank the councillors and the staff that attended the Roma Conference and advocated for the County of Renfrew, whether through important topics in their municipality or for the general betterment of all residents in the county. I attended the Eamon Board meeting on January 26. We received updates on the following: housing, including the government priorities for the next Housing Supply Action Plan; updating access and privacy legislation, which was a real crowd-stopper; Ontario Health and Safety Act, City of Sudbury, Greater Sudbury Decision; energy procurements; childcare update; a response to the final report of the independent fourth review of the Accessibility for Ontario Homes with Disability Act. I also participated in a learning session with Eamon regarding homelessness and encampments. Now, there's a very informative presentation from Finland on their model. They reduced their housing or their homelessness from about eighteen thousand to thirty-one hundred in a ten-year program. On behalf of council, I wish to express our sincere condolences to councillor Valerie Yon and her family on the passing of her brother Ian Newman on December 20 and her sister Jane Jessup on December 24. I will remind those assembled here of the following: the County of Renfrew, experience our history, share our future. This concludes my address for this session of county council. And delegations, we're pleased to welcome Warden Jane Toller, sorry, I'm from Pontiac County, our neighbour, and she's here to report, present a report, Energy from Waste Project. So, welcome, Warden.
(Audio noise) To that back room?
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you very much, Warden Eamon. I met with you, I believe it was July 2023, and I have looked forward to having this opportunity to address your council as a whole. I'm joined today by Carrie Richardson, who is our environmental coordinator for MRC Pontiac, and I entitle this "Opportunity for an Ontario-Quebec Partnership." This is a picture I'm kind of proud of. It was on the front page of the Le Dois newspaper in Gatineau in 2019, and it says, the translation, "Pontiac wishes to transform your waste into electricity." I don't know if anyone saw this on December 2nd. It came as a surprise to me. We had the Ottawa Citizen brought to our meeting where we were going to vote on moving forward with our business plan, and actually, they were summoned by a small group of people who are against the project, and I don't think that they realized how this would result. It resulted in five full pages in the Ottawa Citizen, and because it's owned by the National Post, it went national, was received in Vancouver, Calgary, Edmonton, Montreal Gazette, and so we're really, I'm very thankful to that person because this project has become validated. And what I learned, I learned a lot in this article. It was well researched by Andrew Duffy. You can find it on the internet. He did world research, and he compared landfill to technologies, and I was horrified to discover that Canada is currently burying ninety-seven percent of its waste in landfill. We have so much land. And he compared to places like Sweden and Denmark that are much advanced. And on that note, in our business plan, we were very fortunate to have as our lead consultant, the global lead for thirty-two years from a company called Rambo in Denmark, and she is currently working on a project, only fifty thousand tonnes in Prince Edward Island, but to the other extreme, Shanghai, two-point-seven million tonnes of waste per year. And the benefit of working with a country that has been incinerating since the early nineteen-seventies is they have perfected cleaning the emissions, so the emissions are not an issue. In fact, they're so healthy that in Copenhagen, Copenhagen Hill, this is also mentioned in the article, there's a nice picture, of a businessman skiing down. The top of the incinerator is a ski hill called Copenhagen, and the sides are the world's highest climbing walls, a hundred meters. Not sure rebuilding that in the Pontiac, but we're in good hands with this consultant. She's worked on every project in Canada as well. We chose Deloitte for our business plan because they worked on Durham York. Has anyone here visited the Durham York facility, just outside of Toronto? I know at the last FCM meeting, some people were able to take a bus out and had a tour. And I know the city of Ottawa have had a tour. Let's talk about the context. Currently, our MRC Pontiac, with only fourteen thousand seven hundred people, has five thousand tonnes of waste per year, and we're trucking it all the way to Les Chutes landfill, which is huge, and you know, they just keep increasing the size, but the time is coming where the Premier of Quebec will say, no, no new landfills, and we're going to have to close landfills. And I've had discussions with the Ontario government, and I think there's a very good chance that that's going to happen as well. So some of you may have landfills that are available for fifty years, but the question will be, will the government interfere or recommend a better solution? So we're spending one-point-seven million dollars annually, which is a lot, considering our total budget is only nine million. So historically, we have refused to landfill sites. We're against landfill, but we do support energy from waste since 2011, so we've had four councils vote unanimously for it, including the current eighteen. Now, you may have noticed that six weren't sure they wanted us to take a hundred thousand from our surplus, but that was the only thing they were voting against. Really, for a hundred and twenty thousand, we got a lot of good information. The MRC Pontiac has a proposed site with heavy industrial zoning for waste management in the municipality of Litchfield, above Portage de Four. This site could allow electricity to be transmitted directly to the Hydro Quebec and potentially to the Ontario Power Generation at the Chenault Dam, and there will be trucks crossing this dam, and recently, work has been done on the dam, and I checked, and the crane alone that sits on it is three hundred tonnes, and each truck that would carry, a fifty-three-foot truck carrying thirty tonnes of garbage. So no problem, we don't need to renovate the bridge. Today, energy from waste and numerous technologies involved in that are approved by the Quebec government, and we also have had the BAP, which is a provincial consultation that was done, and not only do they, did the people of Quebec approve incineration, it is recommended. Currently, today, there is no municipal incinerator in Quebec, so MRC Pontiac, we've worked on this since 2017, will be the first. And we're excited that the Minister of the Environment is coming, and we don't have ministers come too often to the Pontiac, sometimes it's a little bit forgotten. He's made an arrangement, we know what day he's coming, in March, because he wants to stand on the site, and he wants to hear all about our plans, which he supports. In Ottawa, the, excuse me, just one moment. Yeah, City of Ottawa has been studying solutions, you've been reading about it, I'm sure, and their landfill is currently the size of many football fields. It's, they've got thirty percent left, and their draft report was showing how they could extend the life. They are looking at anaerobic digestion eventually with convertis, I think, but their final report will be approved in 2024. Before finalizing the draft, before Christmas, they voted to explore incineration. So this could mean, will they build an incinerator in Ottawa, or will they consider sending it to the Pontiac? Ottawa has a population of one million, growing all the time. They need a socially acceptable waste management solution, and it is our capital city. I think it could be difficult to locate an energy from waste facility within the borders of Ottawa, because there's a term nimby, not in my backyard, and I was surprised, but in the article that was in the Ottawa Citizen, they call me a yimby, yes, in my backyard. Covid has led to a ten percent increase, I'm sure your staff saw that, with Covid, increasing garbage, and we also know as populations increase, the waste will increase. Our MRC has presented this proposal to the Minister of Environment and also to the Minister of Energy and Economic Development. The idea: to build an energy from waste facility in the MRC Pontiac, Quebec, that could receive municipal waste from the City of Ottawa, Renfrew County, the City of Pembroke, and the regions of the Oudway. This is a map. I have a better map that I could forward to Warden Eamon later today, that really shows a red line all the way around, but it's kind of like a sandwich with the Ottawa River in the middle. The Oudway is, consists of five regions, Pontiac being one, includes the City of Gatineau, also Valley de la Gatineau, Decolin, and Papinot. Then, at the top, we have Pembroke, then we have Renfrew County, and then we have Ottawa. To explain this idea, Quebec currently accepts medical waste, recyclables, and construction debris from Ontario. Household waste from Ontario hadn't been permitted because of limited landfill capacity in Quebec, but now that this can be transformed into energy, not just burned to the air, but transformed into electricity and steam, it will be permitted. When Smurfet Stone was in operation, you may remember that mill, that is the site that this new facility will be built, fifty percent of the pulp and biomass came from Ontario, came from Renfrew County, from your mills, and also from the Algonquin Forestry Association. So the model of receiving waste of another sort was already there, from Ontario. Our proposed solution is to build a four-hundred-thousand-ton energy from waste facility. An energy from waste facility works by taking waste that cannot be recycled, so I was asked by the Mayor of Petawawa, are we going to be putting any organics in it? Absolutely not. We're not permitted to put any organics in it, so there's no competition with an anaerobic digester. We also will be not able to put any recyclables in it as well. Quebec is on a real campaign, we're building a big MRF in Montreal, and they claim that they're going to have another use for every recycled good, so we will see. So we're talking about just the residual waste that, after we maximize composting and recycling. And then what happens is that waste is converted, it's a resource, it's not just garbage, and it will be converted into potential energy, and there's three kinds of energy: heat, electricity, and transportation fuels. We're focused on steam heat for district heat, heating, and electricity. In this case, four-hundred-thousand tonnes will produce four-hundred-and-fifty megawatts of electricity and steam heat. We're hoping to even heat our hospital, twenty-six kilometers away. The steam can be carried fifty-three kilometers. As you know, Pontiac is a bilingual border region, which I think makes it very easy to do business with Ontario. We have several access points, which include Highway seventeen to the Chenault Dam, Highway one forty-eight from Pembroke and from Gatineau, and from the north, Highway three oh one from Valley de la Gatineau. Now, this is very nonspecific. These were the tonnages we started with. After the business plan that we've just completed, I haven't adjusted the numbers, but we're finding that as recycling and composting is picking up, the tonnages are being reduced, but we also have to take into account increases of population. So this shows you the MRC Pontiac at the top with only five thousand tonnes, Ottawa, Pembroke, Renfrew County. I know that four of your municipalities are sending waste to Moose Creek landfill, but we also have toured the Waste Recovery Centre, and then the Oudway is also mentioned. So this total shows three-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand. The technology choice that we have chosen is incineration. The closest example is the Durham York Energy Centre, which is operated by Covanta. It was built by Covanta. This used to be an American company. It is now owned by Sweden. They bought it for five billion dollars, so it's a successful company with over fifty facilities currently operating in the world. We, out of incineration, choose mass combustion. This is where the waste is heated to over a thousand degrees Fahrenheit, and within an hour and a half, several tonnes are reduced to steam and ash. There are five thousand facilities in the world using mass combustion. It is the most popular, which again, gives us great comfort. It's proven, and it's reliable. So the facility could be built by Covanta, but the technology is not Covanta. Technology will be the best in the world and the cleanest, and these are mainly being manufactured in countries like Germany, Norway, but there will be many, when the time comes, coming to our door, asking to be the chosen technology. Capital costs: a four-hundred-thousand-ton private-public partnership facility costs four-hundred-and-fifty million to build, and I want you to know right now that we do not see, if you become a partner in this endeavour, you will not be asked for capital costs. Thirty-six months of construction will involve eight hundred people, managed on budget and on time. Private investors are already in place, they've given us expressions of interest totaling a hundred and fifty million of the four-hundred-and-fifty, but we've been cautioned by the consultants that you don't want too much private money, because private companies want to be reimbursed at double-digit interest, and it will affect the operating cost and increase the tipping fee, which we don't want. Other sources of funding that would be public are from Investment Quebec, where if you put in twenty, they give eighty; the Green Municipal Fund from Quebec, and the Green Infrastructure Fund, from which you're familiar with through FCM. Administration board of this own facility would be created, composed of all the users, so the users would be the owners of this facility, although it's located in Pontiac. So it could be made up of Ottawa, Pembroke, Renfrew County, Pontiac, and Oudway. The waste management is paid by a user pay based on tonnage and tipping fees. The sale of ferrous and non-ferrous metals recovered brings in significant revenue. The hydro is sold to Hydro Quebec, and Hydro Quebec have a relationship with Ontario, and they, that's going to continue for the next five years. A possible secondary transformation, I'm very interested in this, instead of having maybe thirty percent of the residue go to a landfill, there can be another business, where the bottom ash is generated to create inert ash, sorry, is generated to create cement for building infrastructure, and a sand substitute for the roads. The inert, healthy ash could be locally landfilled. We have a small landfill right on the site. Waste is picked up from transfer stations, not coming from every single street. You know, when people talk about, oh, the trucks, well, we estimate with fifty-three-foot trucks with movable floors, they'll go directly into, for example, Ottawa's three transfer stations that are all out in the West End conveniently, and they, their report says they probably need two more transfer stations. So it would be pick-up at transfer stations, and a minimum of a thousand tonnes will be transformed every day, and the power delivery is twenty-four-seven, so unlike wind, solar, or even hydro, water and dams, this is twenty-four-seven, and the only time that it closes is two times a year for May- And the only time that it closes is two times a year for maintenance, which is just a couple of days at a time. So there's no fuel needed to keep this going. It's the waste that continues to fuel it. And when you do need to relight it after maintenance, we don't have natural gas, we will use propane. Approximately 40 trucks per day, if they're coming on 53-foot trucks. The continuous emission monitoring is complemented with periodic testing performed by regulator-approved third parties, which is important. Air emerging from the stack is well scrubbed by baghouses, lime, and water. So 99% is water vapor, nitrogen, oxygen, and carbon monoxide. Compared to the greenhouse gas that is coming from landfills. And landfills, we have to be responsible for them for the rest of the world's history. And you know that if you don't vent it, you're going to have explosions and fires. And we've spoken to Kitty Gansabianishnebeg, who are our Algonquin people, who actually own the land where this will be built. And they much prefer a technology like this to landfill, which can affect the air, the soil, and the water. The emissions from Durham York and all of the other facilities we've looked at are well below the EU and A7, which is for Ontario allowable emissions. And for every ton of waste processed by energy from waste, it equals one ton of greenhouse gas avoided. This is a quick graph that just shows you. The, the orange is the amount of landfilling. And so you can see Canada has, it says only 63% here compared to the EU average, which is 2.8%. And actually, the picture on the left bottom is the Copan Hill. That is the ski hill with the climbing walls on the side in Copenhagen. The benefits. This will establish the Ottawa Valley region as an environmental leader. It provides a solution to the national capital region's residual waste problem with major diversion from landfill. This large region shows environmental, socially accepted leadership achievable in a reasonable time from now, four to six years. Pontiac will save $1.7 million. We won't have to ship to La Chute any longer. The facility will create power for the equivalent of 50,000 homes or 100,000 electric cars. And at the facility, 50 jobs permanent will be created. The next steps. MRC Pontiac has completed initial business plan with Deloitte and Ramble from Denmark, evaluating various technologies, looking at business models, partnerships, quantifying tonnages, travel distances, tipping fees, price of electricity production, and funding. The results are in draft form and will be shared when finalized. Key findings. Excellent and clean technologies are available. 2575 private-public partnership is the best option. A 300,000-ton facility could suffice with new tonnage information, so this will be less expensive. DBOM, or DBOM, as Deloitte calls it, is the best plan. Where we have a company, for example, Covanta, design, build, operate, and maintain. It will last for 30 years. Then it is renovated and can be in operation for another 30 years. The last finding. It is very competitive with the current tipping fees that are being paid for landfill. And the distances are all reasonable for all of these regions coming to the Pontiac. Pontiac is in the center. What do we next need to do? We need to do an in-depth business plan, partially funded, we hope, with interested partners and government grants. Public consultation will follow. That's the environmental assessment, which is done through the Ministry of Environment. And that's where everybody can have their say. But just to give you some feedback, of our 14,700 people, only less than 3% have been very vocal. And they have a petition on change.org, which is for all of Canada, not just the Pontiac. And actually, I'm thankful for all of their questions and concerns being raised because it's shown me two things. One, that they are talking about a project that will never build. They're talking about the old-style incineration. Number two, it's always important to understand what the objections and concerns are and do our best to meet all of them and reassure people. I've said begin construction will be another step. But before that, I just want to finish by saying we all need a solution for waste. And we hope that you will consider our facility of energy from waste as a possible option for Renfrew County. And if we have three minutes, I wanted to show the video. And the video is on that link. And how do I start that, or can someone else click on that? Pardon me? Oh, just, oh, it started. Is the volume good? Am I okay?
We're Covanta, a world leader in providing sustainable waste and energy solutions to municipalities, businesses, and industries. If you've ever wondered what goes on behind the scenes at one of our energy from waste facilities, we'd love to show you. We're proud of our modern plants and the people who work here. So come on in. Once trucks arrive, they are weighed and checked in before heading inside to the tipping hall. The waste is unloaded onto the tipping floor and visually inspected for any unacceptable items, which are removed for separate recycling or proper disposal. Waste is then pushed into a storage pit and thoroughly mixed before being loaded into bins, which we call hoppers, where it travels to the combustion chamber. The tipping and waste storage areas are maintained under negative air pressure to contain dust and odors. Once fed into the combustion chamber, waste is combusted at extremely high temperatures in a self-sustaining process at approximately 2,000 degrees Fahrenheit. A typical hopper load is completely combusted in one to two hours. As waste is burned, the heat converts water in the steel-tube-lined walls into steam that rises through boiler tubes where it is superheated. The steam turns a turbine-driven generator to produce electricity, or may sometimes be used directly for heating or industrial processes. The electricity produced by the turbine generator is exported to local utilities for use in homes and businesses. Each ton of waste can generate 550 to 700 kilowatt-hours of electricity. Steam from the process is condensed back into water and returned to the boiler tubes, making it an efficient closed-loop system. After combustion, the volume of waste is reduced by 90%, leaving an inert ash and metal. Remaining ash is beneficially reused or landfilled as non-hazardous waste. Ferrous metals such as iron and steel are recovered using a rotating drum magnet. And non-ferrous metals like aluminum and copper are separated by an eddy current system. Collected metal is sold to be made into new products. State-of-the-art air pollution control equipment ensures that emissions are well below limits to be fully protective of human health and the environment. We neutralize acid gases using lime in a scrubber reactor and inject activated carbon for heavy metal control. We control emissions of particulate matter primarily through a baghouse, which employs thousands of fabric filter bags. All flue gas must pass through the bags before exiting through the stack. Throughout this process, the control room closely monitors emissions through a real-time continuous emission monitoring system, controls steam flow, and a number of other automated systems inside the facility. Covanta is committed to providing sustainable waste and energy solutions to ensure no waste is ever wasted. At Covanta, we believe the materials discarded every day should be utilized to their fullest potential to preserve the world's valuable resources and generate clean energy for our communities and the world we live in. This is how Covanta is powering today and protecting tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Would you like me to take one or two questions?
Sure.
All right, are there any questions?
Any questions, comments, concerns from members of council? I see the member from Bois-Sainte Valley.
Thank you, Warden, and thanks, Warden, Jane. It's lovely to see you.
Lovely to see you again.
Just one question. In your explanation of the idea, one of the things it says is by taking waste that cannot be recycled or composted. I suppose my question is, knowing that there's a very low commodity for plastics, et cetera, does it mean cannot be recycled or should not be recycled at this time? And in that case, could we incinerate things that have zero commodity that I am fearful are going into landfills? I think there are many people that share my concerns. And if you can't answer that, I know that...
No, I can. It's a, it's an excellent question. I'm quite confident that Durham York has got, they're not actively taking recycling. But I think from time to time where there's some problem waste, they are looking after it. I do know that when Covid first came out, it was the Covantas down in the US that were looking after all of the sort of infected things. And there, I've been told that if you were putting rubber tires in or something with plastic, it's a higher burn, so you have to slow it down. However, in Quebec right now, we do have a very zealous new organization called the EEQ. And we're, you know, I'm watching to see how, how it goes. Because the people that I represent were all saying, we're concerned that it's all just going to landfill. All this effort for recycling and where is it really going? Because when China closed their doors, that made a big difference with the plastics. And so I think this is one of these endeavors that looks good, sounds good. We'll see where it goes. But I will tell you that after the woman made her presentation, I told her about our energy from waste. And, and I said, if we can help you in any way with, she came running back and said, I don't think we have another use for chip bags. Could we bring the chip bags to your incinerator? I thought, I bet there will be more things. So yes, you know, an incinerator can take those things. But it's important that I make the statement because what Quebec has now put into place, they have told us, that we'll have another conveyor belt that will pull out any plastics. We will ask our partners not to send recyclables. But you know, to say never, I just think in the world of garbage, there has to be some flexibility. And I also, though, don't want to discourage any waste management staff that are working hard to get their residents to comply with the recycling and composting. We're hoping to initiate door-to-door composting. And we have a lot of farms, and they think that's crazy. But I had a chance to launch the green bin when I was on the Toronto Council in 2005. And I remember thinking, the only way you can estimate how much you're capturing with the organics is to have it picked up at every door. And if you don't make it convenient for people, right from the decision at the sink to put it in the little bin that goes in the bigger bin, it will go in the garbage. And you know, we're trying to lessen what's going to landfill. We should, it's, it's different environmentally with energy for waste. Energy from waste in some countries may be taking recyclables. But we're hoping to have a model that is not advocating anything but residual waste, which should be about 30% of what's left over. And yet, that was a long answer, but yes?
Thank you, a member from North Algonquin.
Thank you, Sharon Thruy. What an excellent presentation. And I really do believe this is a much better solution than burying garbage. How close do you think you are to an actual start date on the construction?
So we know that it will take three years, 36 months, to build the facility. We also know that we need to have an environmental assessment. Our last business plan just took three months. I would say we will start the next business plan as soon as possible. And I would hope maybe by June, we would have that finalized. Then I'm ready to go right into our environmental assessment phase. Some were saying, well, we want to have a referendum or a vote on this before you even do a business plan. Well, what is there to discuss and vote on if you haven't done your business plan? And we need to also first see where will the waste come from? Because in 2010, when MRC Pontiac wanted an incinerator, they forgot that it takes a fair amount of waste, and the whole Oudway only had 90,000 tons. It's been my idea to look at Ontario because I'm basically an Ontario person that moved to Quebec in 2012. And I understand from being on the City of Toronto Council how Ontario works. And I did go to Vic Fideli's office because he's offering $500,000 for any Ontario-Quebec partnerships. So you know, the fastest this could take place, if an environmental assessment takes a year. But our consultants told us that sometimes it takes four years. I mean, I would hope not. And I will be advocating not to rush the process. It's got to have its fair time. But I think what's really going to help is that the Minister of Environment supports us. And they've even told us, Carrie and I were in on a presentation with their ministry, that they have funds that could even pay to build this. So it helps a lot if the government's behind you. And the fact that they did an extensive BAP consultation. And as far as the people in the Pontiac are concerned, they look at it this way. We want to be revitalized. We used to be a very successful place, and we're now one of the poorest parts of Quebec. So we see this as jobs, and we also are quite green, the fact that we've never allowed major landfills. So this is a chance for us. We can't be a leader in forestry anymore. We can't be a leader in agriculture. But we can be a leader in waste management and set an example and be a good neighbor.
Thank you, a member from Avaston Bromley, then Greater Matawaska, and then Petawawa.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. And thank you, Warden, for a very comprehensive presentation. I think that we absolutely are in a time of innovation, and we need to change the way we are doing things. We did have a presentation a few years back. I think that this is somewhat different when it's speaking of incineration. I think that the other program, which was sustained technology, was a microlizing, I believe, or a steaming of the process.
I, I know them very well. I know the projects, yeah.
So, so we have to get ourselves outside of the box, and we have to approach our needs. And in fact, the other element of this, aside from its landfilling, that is also part of your presentation, is the contribution towards energy production and the reduction of greenhouse gases. So having said that, I am somewhat confounded that we have a very similar program here on the Ontario side with the near-surface disposal facility, with low-level nuclear waste at Chalk River, at CNL, and the heavily engineered and rigorously vetted through an approvals process. And likewise, with the consent of the Algonquin of Pickwakanagon. And yet, the MRC Pontiac still continues to be opposed to this. And it seems an incongruous position, both to be embracing the technology herein described, and yet being opposed to the technology that is being described that is going to play an enormous role in greenhouse gas reduction, in our adapting and confronting climate change. That it confounds me that MRC Pontiac still continues to be opposed to that development.
Okay, well, I can say that the Algonquins on the Quebec side were completely against it. And initially, in my first term as Warden, we just asked for more information. In the current term, we just ask that the storage be, we were being told it was one kilometer from the river. We are heavily flooded. And the flooding is continuing because of climate change. And I have also the knowledge that we are the least healthy of 89 MRCs in all of Quebec. I can't prove that cancer is coming from the water, but we do know that our MRC is the closest. And you know, in the end, 140 municipalities on the Ontario and Quebec side were against the particular location. Now that it's all been decided, I can tell you that I think it was just last Monday or last week, we had a contingent go. It was an economic development opportunity, because we have 300 people working at CNL from the Pontiac. And we appreciate, you know, the jobs that are being provided to them. So we still have a working relationship with them. And one resolution, we, is, is, you know, we stood up and said what we did. But now that the decision has been made, we did not launch a legal dispute or anything like that. And I think they understand that our only concern was we were being told that it's being stored one kilometer. And you know, nothing is 100% sure. Time will tell, and we hope that this will be a safe solution. I received some information yesterday telling me that it's not going to be exactly one kilometer. But it's actually going to be much further up by Rolfton. So I, I don't know what, you know, the right answer is. But we work closely with Kitty Gansabianishnebeg. They are our Algonquin. I know Pickwakanagon did support it, and that surprised them. So really, I see the two as unrelated. But you've asked me this question. I'm certainly going to... going to answer it. At the time, our council felt the right decision was to say, please move it further away, so there can't be any leaching, so that there can't possibly with flooding be any leakage into the river, because we do know earlier in the 50s or so, the nuclear waste was going right into the river. And something is causing us to die of cancer. We don't know what it is, but could be related to the Ottawa River.
Follow-up?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. I have to take issue, actually, Warden, taller. In the absence of any evidence, I think that that is unfounded, and I think it is prejudicial. And I don't think it is helpful in the conversation, quite frankly. That is, the yimby and the nimby seem to be in substantial conflict. When you assert that, we don't know what might happen. The same can be said of incineration, but these are the things that we must embrace to move forward. That's my concern here, is that I think the leadership that is required here is to embrace that there are going to be risks in anything our modern society is going to do. And I don't think it's actually responsible to be suggesting unfounded that these are leading to health concerns. This has gone through a rigorous approvals process, and I'm assuming so too will the incinerator. And at the end of that, if it is approved, I'm assuming that that agency that is tasked with the approval will have done their job.
Well, I will rebut with two points. Number one, I did say we cannot prove, so I did not state there's a relationship between cancer and the nuclear waste. Number two, we are moving forward. We are moving forward and embracing the decision. That's it, that's all for the MRC Pontiac. We're not further disputing Chalk River.
Great, thank you, and we'll move to Greater Matawaska, member, please.
Thank you, Warden through you, Warden to the Warden. I know you're looking for partnerships in this, and I know over in Europe, the partnerships are set up, and there's a minimum tonnage requirement from each county or each township. And if that minimum tonnage is not met, then there are penalties. Is this the model that you are looking at as well? Because there could be more cost to it than upfront.
No. No, we won't, because there is, with Ottawa as kind of the anchor supply of waste, and if we build 300,000 tons, no, we're not setting up a model where you're going to be required to send a certain amount, because then you will probably need to put in some recyclables and things like that. No, I think more information to really address that issue will be raised and realized in our more intensive business plan. This was kind of a high-level business plan. I just wanted to know, does this idea even make sense? Are the distances for driving appropriate? And is the tipping fee going to be so much higher that, you know, they said to me in Ottawa, we just want it to be cost-effective? It has to be cost-effective, or why would you even consider this? Yeah.
Thank you. And the member from Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Warden, through you. It's nice to see this level of innovation coming from a small rural municipality like ourselves, way up in the corner of nowhere. So it's great to see, and thanks for all the work you've done on this. My question, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, we have an Ottawa Valley Waste Recovery Center that I think has about eight to 10 years of life left. So should you get this built and up and running in, say, five years, we still have a landfill that's serviceable. Are you hoping that if we do become a partner in this project, that we would instantly take part? Or would there be some leeway in us continuing to fill our landfill and then becoming a partner?
So the consultant's plan actually showed that changeover taking place in 2032, because they were looking at how much, how long Ottawa can go with their current landfill. When will they need absolutely the solution? I said, well, I'm not sure I would still be the Warden by 2032. I think it's very difficult sometimes to keep a project on track if it takes too long to build. And I think what our potential partners are looking for is, we want to know there's a solution coming sooner than later. So it would have to be your decision based on, of course, finances, your budget, taxes, things like that. But I am under the impression in Ottawa that if it's cost-effective for them, and similar to what they're currently paying, they're at $130 a ton, but it's actually $185 with $55 of taxes. And then, you know, that's going to appreciate over time. But I'm under the impression that the people that live near the trail road landfill are so tired of this that they would be very happy to switch as soon as they can. So, you know, provided, they were wondering about greenhouse gases, and I said, well, if all goes well, we may have electric trucks by then. But the greenhouse gas comparison versus what's coming out of a landfill, there is no comparison. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last questions, and the member from Bonter Valley, please.
Thank you, Warden. To follow up on my colleague from Petawawa's comments, one of the challenges we do have here is that waste management is not at the county level. So some of us have a little bit left in our waste sites, some of us have quite a bit of time, others are with OVWRC, we've got all different models. So it will, the tonnage that you put in your, in your presentation may vary depending on if and when those municipalities will sign on. So I think that's just food for thought for us at this, sitting here at the county level. Thank you.
It's also municipal in Pontiac, and we, I created something called the Waste Management Committee, because it was the only way that our staff could actually work with all the mayors and director generals at one time. So we have this virtual meeting, and what we're trying to do more and more is get everyone composting in the same way and recycling in the same way. Then it's coordinated. But in the next step with the business plan, we would hope that maybe, you know, sometimes it's not easy getting the right information. We would hope that you might be open-minded to giving us the information that we need, just so we have accurate statistics. It's not saying you're signing on.
Thank you. Just a very quick question, I'm sure is top of mind for everybody. Can we mine some of our sites? Will your program accept those?
Yeah, that was the answer I should have said about penalties on not meeting the sort of expected amounts of tonnage. Yes, mining the landfills can absolutely be done. First priority is to have the waste disappear from your residents' laneways. But second would be, if you can see that you're going to have a half-full truck, you know, a half-full truck, of course, we could take anything that's already in landfill. And I think residents would be happy and see that as a very progressive thing.
Thank you very much. With that, thank you very much, Warden. Always a pleasure and a very informative session, and we certainly appreciate your passion in trying to move this forward.
Thank you very much. You've been very generous with your time and hope to be working with you. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, if you would introduce our next delegation, please.
Sure, and thanks, Warden. And I'm pleased to announce today and present. Ainsworth is here today for our Climate Action Plan to provide an overview of the project. Again, for the Climate Action Plan, this is the second time we try to do this one. You recall, late last year, we awarded the contract for our Climate Action Plan to the company Ainsworth. So today, we have Sad and Sean here today to provide this update and also to provide an update from staff. So county staff have been working with Ainsworth for the last number of weeks and months. Bruce Howard, who's at the back, is our lead staff member on this. And we do have a working group within our county administration building here to help with the data collection. So staff from the Planning Services, Public Works, Paramedic Services is gathering the data that they require, that Ainsworth require to produce the plan to move forward. So I'm pleased to announce that they're here to provide an update. Thank you, Warden. Thank you.
I just want to make sure that everyone can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Excellent, thank you. Well, good morning, and thank you to Warden Peter Eman and the Renfrew City Council for inviting us to join you today. I'd also like to take the time to thank also Bruce Howard and his team for collaborating with us on this project and for inviting us to join this council meeting. My name is Sean Tashara. I was one of the lead proposal managers responsible for submitting our proposal for the Climate Change Action Plan. I represent Ainsworth, which is a multi-trade technical services company, which specializes in energy efficiency decarbonation projects, also including HVAC facility management maintenance applications as well. We had the pleasure of being awarded this contract by the County of Renfrew in September 2023, following our proposal to provide consultative services to develop county's climate change action plan. If we could just take a look at the following slide. The goal of today's presentation is to provide context into the Climate Change Plan, why we are doing this, to look at the core principle of this mandate, what our progress is today in advancing the greenhouse gas inventory that's currently ongoing, and also reviewing the next steps in established timeline that we have prepared for this particular mandate, and hopefully we'll have some time for questions at the end of the presentation. We take a look very quickly at the roundtable of team members involved with this project. We have our executive sponsors, Mark Brillan, who's the lead project manager, and Randy Top, who is the vice president of business development at Ainsworth. We have our lead consultant and carbon expert, Sad, who will be providing the bulk of this presentation today. But we also have many other team members who are heavily involved in this project, Melanie Pelletier, who's involved with research and application of financial subsidy programs, Emmanuel, who is responsible for communication strategy. One of our partners, Derek Setnick from S2E, who will be providing guidance on renewable energy technologies, Chris Anisco, who is an energy engineer. And I myself am providing support throughout the execution of this particular mandate. And so with, with the context of where we are today, there are obviously ever-increasing challenges posed by climate change and in addition to population growth. And so the County of Renfrew had set up a request for, quote, for proposal for a consultative partner who could provide services to build the Climate Change Action Plan in order to help the County of Renfrew identify measures and objectives to fully carbonize their operations by 2050. I'll allow Sad to continue, who will provide a bit more context on this, on this issue. And I'm looking forward to your questions at the end of the presentation.
Hello, everyone. So I'm here today to introduce you our mandate, and most importantly, to make sure that you understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. So first, I just want to understand the first why. The first why is the PCP program that has set five milestones against which we will compare all the municipalities. So basically, what this PCP program is giving us is a perimeter against which every municipality will go. So in a way, it will allow us to have comparable results. And that's one of the main issues, I would say, in the GHG world. And the reason for that program actually is a broader macro environment. And the, what you need to understand is that decarbonization is not only coming to our county, it has come and been pushed by international coalition. So in the 1990s, the IPCC task assessment made international governments realize that they needed to make inventories. They needed to understand their emission in order to reduce them. And that's what brought the Canadian government to issue their first inventory in 2005. So basically, each time you hear the Canadian government tell you that they want to reduce emission by 40% in 2013 or 2040, the reference year will be 2005, because that's the year in which they issued the first inventory. And again, the PPC actually invites all municipalities to choose their own reference year and to align themselves with either their government or the broader environment that is led by the Paris Agreement. Because at the end of the day, what we all aim for is a net zero target, decarbonization by 2050. And actually, the fact that it is an ecosystemic trend, it is pretty good news. Why? Because first, we have improved national case reports that give us more information, that give us better, I would say, data to make relevant hypotheses. Also, we have public and specialized funds that will allow us to invest in solutions that were not, I would say, economically feasible. And with all of that, we realize that there is a growth of awareness, a growth of data availability, and also an expansion of new services, and of course, an increased investment of the private sector. So all of that is good. And with that ecosystemic change, we want, as a firm, in for this mandate, we want to bring a systemic approach. So basically, what we want is to make sure that we are aligned with the relevant existing strategy within your county, just to make sure that we will closely monitor the outputs from all the adjacent strategies, to make sure that our GHG reduction plan will be seamlessly incorporated within your framework. And the reason for that is, I would say, a fundamental desire to bring a holistic approach that will not only promote sustainability, but also promote effective collaboration and knowledge transmission. Because at the end of the day, we will put in place forward-looking trends and also establish robust monitoring, so we will allow autonomy. Today, you will have this mandate with us, but we aim for you to do it on your own by next year. And the reason for that is, is I would say, I would say, at the end of the day, what is important is money. With knowledge transmission about this mega trend, we will also give you knowledge transmission about capital flow. What you need to understand is that decarbonization will touch every sector. There is no sector that can hide from that mega trend. So we will look at renewable energy, new mobility, sustainable practices in agriculture, forest management, or industry. We'll look at new ways to make buildings, and all of that will attract massive investment that are projected in Ontario and also worldwide. This is, I would say, a snapshot from McKinsey that made that study and just wanted to put, I would say, the emphasis on the investment that are all going to be coming in the next years. Because at the end of the day, all this investment will be, I would say, heavily present in the next, in the next programs that will be launched. So that's why for us, it's very important to make sure that the county is understanding their own specificities and also how they can take advantage of that capital flow. Speaking of specificities, what you need to understand is that at the end of the day, the decarbonization will majorly impact three major sectors, transportation, industry, and buildings, especially in Ontario. But behind all of that, what is the footprint of transportation? What is the footprint of the industry? What is the footprint of buildings? Behind all of that, you need to realize that the real problem is about the footprint of energy. Most of emissions are related to fossil fuels. So realizing a decarbonization trajectory is also understanding how you're going to change or optimize your energy profile. And with that, it makes our decarbonization strategy basically an energy transformation strategy. And what we're looking for is basically alignment. So not only will we look for alignment within your own, your own frameworks, we will also make sure that the GHG plan will make, will make, I would say, a bridge between your framework that we will incorporate and the frameworks of broader stakeholders, such as the Ontario Power Generation. Because when you look at the profile of Ontario, you will see that between 2005 and 2019, most of the reduction that were gained, were gained to the decarbonization of the electricity Once we got through that, I would say, electricity challenge, it leaves us again with building, transport, and industry, and all of that, of course, is linked to energy, which is, I'd say, a good news, because we have actors that actually want to advance mobility electrification. We have actors that want to advance energy storage industry. We have actors that want to issue more green bonds. We have actors that want to invest in new technology on, in on new research and development. So that's very interesting for us. But for us to get the best of it, we need to understand where we're at, where is our environment going, and how we can make sure to, I would say, to react in a way in which we can capture the capital as soon as possible. At least, that's our goal, to give you a roadmap toward that. And I'm just giving you one example because at the end of the day, not only we are here to make sure that you understand the opportunities, but we are here to make sure that you're aligned to get easy wins. And I would say, the best example for that would be the heating space. In Ontario, most of the heating is done by natural gas. So the answer would be, let's just go electrify everything. So yeah, that would be a good answer. But there is also projects that can bring demand reduction. And usually, we realize that those projects are the ones that will give the best return on investment throughout the lifecycle of the project. So this is what we're looking for, is to make sure that we understand your specificities, so we are data ready. Once we understand your specificities and your data readiness, we make sure that you're structured. As you said earlier, we are working right now with the county staff. And it is a very painful process for them because we are asking them for data that they'd never got before. So there is a work about structuration. But once the data is normalized, classified, and analyzed, we will make sure that we will converge all the data points so we can highlight the smart measures that will bring, I would say, the best return on investment. And that will bring the best financial viability. And with that, we will also include forward-looking trends and propose innovative solution that will take advantage of capital flow. That is our strategy. So for the impact that we're looking for, hopefully, we will be able to put you in a trajectory that will achieve minus 37 to minus 45 GHG, I would say, reduction on your emissions through the improvement of existing assets and mobility alone. But at the end of the day, what we really want is to make sure that you go through the entire decarbonization process like a leader. But more, it's not about only morals. It's about leader in seizing the opportunities, is being a leader in seizing the numerous investment opportunities that are offered by the government, by the private sector, and by the international carbon market. And for that, we will make sure that the entire Ainsworth family is here to make sure that we not only bring you solutions that look like on paper, but we will bring you solutions that are supported by our expertise. Because at the end of the day, JDI Ainsworth is not, I would say, consulting firm first, but it's about implementation of solutions that make sense. It's about designing and building projects that enable you to get to where you want to get. So that was, I would say, the overall context. As of today, we are still in the first step, which is data readiness. So we are doing a GHG inventory. Basically, what we will look for is to report scope 1, scope 2, and scope 3 emissions. For those who don't know, scope 1, all the emissions that are linked to your perimeter, basically, we will quantify the emissions that are due to fossil fuel combustion and fugitive emissions. Scope 2 emissions are linked to the energy that was purchased. And scope 3 is everything that is outside your perimeter. When it comes to the methodology, it's very easy. What we do is have activity data, an activity data that we will multiply by an emission factor, and that will give us the emission of CO2. So here's a simple example. For heating, we will look at natural gas. Cubic meters of natural gas will be the unit. The emission factor will be kilogram of CO2 per cubic meters of natural gas. So if you multiply something by kilogram of CO2 divided by the same something, it will give you kilogram of CO2. So it's very easy. And the tricky part is when you don't have very good activity data and you need to do hypothesis, or you need to do modeling to have forward-looking trends. When it comes to the boundary, this is a work that we co-designed with the staff. Basically, what we wanted to know is to make sure that we had the good organizational boundary and to make sure that we include the right things. For this mandate, we will do two GHG quantification. We will do one for the county's activity, and we will treat it as a company. And the second one will be for the community as a whole. And the staff will be working with us to make sure that we are including the right parameters and to make sure that everything is tailored to what you actually need. For the reference year, we chose 2021. And the reason for that is because this is the year in which we have the most, I would say, reports, the most data available, especially for the community. So what we want is to have the same reference year for the community and for the county. And that's why we chose that consensus. And once we made that choice, the county started, I would say, collecting all the data. And that's, I would say, a collaborative effort. And I want to thank you, thank the professionalism of your team because they are doing a lot of heavy lifting for this first step. And with the information that they will give us, and that's why they are taking so much time is because it will directly, I would say, impact everything that we will do in the future. If they give us the best data available, the uncertainty around the result will be very low. And then we can have a climate action plan and we can have projects, monitoring, that will be very, I would say, specific and certain. If they didn't do that work and we were just going with hypothesis, we would have a result that would have at least 50% or 80% of uncertainty. And that's not a very, I would say, good inventory to start a climate plan on. So as I said, it's a collaborative work because we are only here as, I would say, the maiden of the methodology. I've been working with TSX, with the Public Transit System and in the carbon market. So I know methodology very well. But at the end of the day, what I don't know is your specificities. And that's why it's very important to highlight the fact that this is a collaborative work. When it comes to the perimeter for the county, what we will look is basically for stationary and mobile emission as well as all the emissions that are linked to infrastructure, refrigerant gases, waste operation. And this is optional, but we will try to get it. All the emissions that are linked to business travel and home-to-work commuting. Most of these information will be collected directly by the county staff and either by energy bills or survey with the employees, especially for home-to-work commuting. When it comes to the community, what we will look is, I would say, a broader picture. We will try to highlight the mission of the residential, commercial, institutional, and industrial sector as well as the transportation sector. We will look at public transportation and road transportation. We will also look at waste, agriculture, and industrial processes. All of that is to make sure that we understand the profile of the community and make sure that we highlight the right opportunities, we highlight the right investment program for you. When it comes to next step and estimated timeline, so far, we are still in phase two. And the reason for that, because phase two is the part that involves the most of your workers. And as I said earlier, we need good data. So you will see that the entire mandate will be dependent on the final data collection input. So phase one was project planning, of course. Phase two is the completion of the full inventory. Once I have the final data, it will be done within eight weeks. And once we have that profile, we will launch the, I would say, collaborative work. Because this is a collaborative process that will involve various stakeholders. And we want to make sure that we understand each opportunity so we can guide it. Because just in this first hour, I heard a lot about biomass plant. I heard a lot about waste-to-energy program. And those are opportunities that we want to highlight in the climate plan. And also, we want to make sure that we captured every, I would say, revenue that we can. Because I just realized, I would say, in Canada, a lot of people forget about the carbon market. It's a new market, but it's a market that can bring you more than 20% of profitability when you look at, I would say, investment of 20 to 40 million. And it's going very well. I want to thank Bruce for all the work that he is doing. And fortunately, we'll be able to answer your question and all meet if you want to be involved more closely in this, I would say, journey. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll check with council for questions, comments, concerns. And I'll start it off by asking one that I've always asked. Are we able to collect revenue from our forests in terms of somebody buying credits or something like that? Because we've got, and then more broadly, the County of Renfrew, as a geographic entity, is 7,500 square kilometers. Approximately 53% of that is covered with forests. So there should be some kind, you know, hopefully, there's some kind of return for us and then other people. Thank you.
So I have two parts for my answer. First part is, and I know this one is a tricky one, theoretically, it's not part of the scope of work because we are doing, I would say, a strategic planning. But the second part is, as I told you, Ainsworth is here to help you. We want to make sure that you choose, I would say, the consultant that will help you throughout the entire journey. So Bruce already told me about that. And we will have a meeting with your forest contact to make sure that we get the most revenue from your current practices and also get the best revenue from your residual waste. Because at the end of the day, there is opportunity from the practice that we do now and also from every, I would say, plant that use the waste biomass to, for instance, go through a pyrolysis plant that will create biochar. So that's what we will do. It's either look at practices because when you look at forest practices, the ton of CO2 will cost around 10 tons per credit, $10 per credit. But when we look at more complex operation, we can go to 250 US per credit. So that's what we will try to do and make sure that we scan all your eligible activities and guide you to the right partner so you can get as much money as you can get.
Okay, thank you. And the member from Amos and Bromley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. And thank you to Ainsworth. Patience is a virtue, but it is rewarded eventually. And I'm inordinately pleased that we are kickstarting this. I know that concurrently, we anticipate, I think, in 2024 to have a master transportation plan. I think that in very short order, we will find that our community is going to demand that we have a climate master plan as well. And this is the first step towards that. So I commend you and I look forward to each step as we progress. I guess for now, my question would be, and this is with respect, there are two slides on our PDF. It is pages 67 and 68. In your presentation, it is pages 22 and 23. And I'm kind of curious if there was a waiting when we started on this journey. In my head, at the very least, it was with an expectation that for this corporation, let's determine what we can do. I do very much embrace the slide on page 68, which is the community. But that is getting to be a scaled, a tremendously scaled up, exponentially larger consideration. I think that there is a real opportunity for the County of Renfrew to be the pathfinder here, both for the public sector and for the private sector within the county. And there is no question that this data mapping is going to be integral and foundational to being able to have a cogent and coherent approach. But for our purposes, particularly on the chart that identified where the confidence level in accuracy diminished greatly depending on the data sources, I'm anticipating that the data gathering from the community is probably going to be subject to a lot higher level of uncertainty than it is from the corporation of the County of Renfrew. And I wonder if you could speak to that, and I would open that to whoever would have the answer, Mr. Warden.
Thank you.
So as I said earlier, we will have two separate inventories, one for the county and one for the community. So theoretically, the uncertainty of one will not affect the other. Secondly, I want to tell you that you will have access to, I would say, a SaaS platform. I will make my calculation on Excel and also a new innovative platform. And the good thing with that platform is it can highlight the part of the inventory that have the higher uncertainty. So theoretically, it will be part of our work. I've worked with numerous corporations. And what I usually say is that the first one is to tell you how painful it is. So you realize what are the efforts that we will need to achieve to make sure that we are able to get that data that will help us master, I would say, our uncertainty. So yeah, I hope this gives you the answer you were looking for.
Uh, supplementary?
It absolutely does. I would remind council when we last were meeting with respect to our budget last week, very kindly, the chief of the paramedics responded when I had raised that I have a great deal of certainty in the weather forecast two and three days from now, but it falls off. And Chief Nolan was able to provide me a spreadsheet where, in fact, at the five-day plus, it drops to 50%. So as it applies to this, if we're experiencing substantial challenges with respect to our community, and I note that one of those elements was an 80% uncertainty. And at 80% uncertainty, it's barely worth going outside because you're going to be packing your winter coat, an umbrella, and your flip-flops because you have no idea at 80%. I might as well flip a coin. I'm presuming, however, even if confronted with that level of uncertainty, it is still setting the benchmark of what do we have to do to be able to accurately map even what the nature of the GHGs are within our broader community? Is that accurate?
So I do understand that an 80% uncertainty can, I would say, be a repellent to have this type of exercise. But just keep in mind that, once we structure that out in the GHG world, we still have, I would say, an open door, an open backdoor that is called recalculations. And this is actually what we advise all the organization. Just go through the exercise so you understand where you're at today and structure yourself to get the best practice. For instance, I'm just going to give you one example. We had the emission for mobile transportation or road transportation. It was linked to an hypothesis that was made at the provincial level. And basically, we were looking at how many cars do you have in each county? So we can give you, I would say, your share. That was very bad. But today, we have access to Google. Google that will give us information based on the tracking of GPS information. And what it enables us is just to go back and do a recalculation on that very specific part. And that's why we want to highlight the uncertainty. Because we tell people, here is what we can do now, but we are working to get you a better information. And as I told you earlier, this is a mega trend. Everyone is going this way. Everyone is asking for better data. So suppliers and private companies are realizing that there is an opportunity here and they are here to meet us with new services. So it's not perfect today, but it might be in two to three years. And there is always that backdoor. that backdoor.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation. And again, to Mr. Howarth, thank you for your participation as well. And with that, we'll let you go. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
I'm so excited that we found Bruce's doppelganger.
I know. I was going to tell him that if he kept his beard trimmed the way it was five years ago. So with that, counsel, we'll move forward to correspondence and more specifically, the letter from Ms. Cook, the Assistant Deputy Minister. Mr. Cial, please.
Thank you, Warden. So I'll note first that all relevant correspondence has gone to the appropriate committees. But in particular, I wanted to highlight this one item that came in while we were at Roma last week, was a call for our housing service managers to submit a business case or business plan to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. They have deemed that there's residual funds in the Kochi funding. Kofi Ochi, it just sounds funky, but Andrew will appreciate the acronyms and as will you during budget time. So it would seem that the government has found some extra dollars and they want to push it out to municipalities or service managers. So staff, Ms. Patrick, Mr. Davis, myself, we've had a conversation about what we could do to make an application. So we will be submitting an application by Monday, thank you, by Monday, for a replacement and renovation project. And this is what we've talked to you before about, is to look at our stock that is currently vacant and not really suitable for renovation at a stock that has aged out in various municipalities, typically, single-family homes. And we're looking at these single-family homes and replacing them with up to duplex, triplex, or a quadplex. So basically, a four-for-one type of scenario. So we'll be submitting a business case of up to about $3.5 million towards this rejuvenation project for our housing units. Again, it's not certain. When it is certain, we will bring this back to you in the form of an agreement and a bylaw for you to sign into law. We're hopeful that we'll be successful. We socialized this with Parliamentary Assistant, is he Parliamentary Assistant, Associate Minister Flack last week. And he was supportive, of course, of any submission, but we feel we are shovel-ready. We have the designs ready to go, and we've got the land that is ready to go as well. So we're fairly confident. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you. And again, thank you for bringing this forward. You know, it's been no secret that some of our housing stock needs to be replaced rather than the rejuvenated. And to do that as well as get the maximum usage of the existing land parcel makes a lot of sense. So thank you. And I should note, I made a mistake inadvertently. I misspoke. Minister Calandra's first name is Paul and not Michael. So if you heard me hesitate when I spit that out, it's because I knew I'd made a mistake and upon reflection. So my apologies to the minister. Because as we know, they spend a great deal of time sitting in their office in Toronto watching our YouTube. So with that, I would ask the Chair of Development and Property, please, to present the report.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And beginning on page 73, to the Council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, our Development and Property Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item number one, bylaws governing trail use within the County of Renfrew. And as indicated in the report, staff recommend repealing bylaw 92-09 and amending or replacing bylaw 119-18 to be all-encompassing of the county's recreational trails so that all of the usage is covered under the same bylaw. And also, staff request that any input on a new or updated bylaw governing county recreational trails be provided no later than February 29, 2024. Item number two is the Record of Decision on Canadian Nuclear Laboratory Near-Surface Disposal Facility. And again, good news that the license for CNL has been amended to authorize the construction of the near-surface disposal facility at the Chalk River Laboratory site. Item number three is the Atomic Energy of Canada Limited Government-Owned Contractor-Operated GOCO procurement process. Again, just a update on the moving-forward procurement process for a new contractor to manage Canadian nuclear laboratories. Excuse me. Item number four is the Pembroke and Area Airport Update. And of course, the information is there for your review. Item number five is the Ottawa Valley Tourist Association Membership Survey. And as indicated, there is a link there that is available until February 2, 2024, if you like to review the data. Item number six is Enterprise Renfrew County Extension of the Transfer Payment Agreement. Again, the details are attached. Item number seven is Enterprise Renfrew County Webinars. And those webinars will take place, the first one beginning today, the Live Life Swift, Build Your Action Plan on February 8, 2024, is the Tax Prep for Corporations with Canada Revenue Agency. And on February 13, 2024, is the HST Tax Information for Small Business. Item number eight is the Renfrew County Forest Harvest Tender Results. And certainly, some good revenues indicated there for the year. Item number nine is the Forestry Operations Annual Updated Update, and the report is attached. Item number 10 is the Eastern Wolf Federal Uplisting. And there were, the province was looking for input on the proposal to change the federal designation of the Eastern Wolf from special concern to threatened. And Renfrew County staff have submitted their comments on that item. Item number 11 is the Future Eaganville Paramedic Base. And just this morning, we did get the tender result for the first phase of that construction, which is certainly planned to move forward as soon as possible. Item number 12 is Ministry Zoning Orders in regards to McNabb Brayside. And that a letter was received from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing that the Ministry zoning order that was originally approved has been revoked by the ministry. Moving to resolutions, item number 13 is the COVID Debt Recovery and SEBA Loan Deadline. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council support the letter and resolution received from the City of Strafford requesting the federal government to extend the Full Canada Emergency Business Account Program. The deadline, by extending the forgiveness up to 20,000 to the maximum of 60,000. The deadline for businesses to coincide with the new repayment deadline of December 31, 2026. And further, that the Warden send a letter of support to the Honorable Christopher Land Finance Minister. And again, the background is there. Moving to bylaws, number 14, amending bylaw Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, Resolution Number DP CC 240104. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, County Council amend bylaw 93-21 to execute an amending agreement, number one, with His Majesty the King in the right of the Province of Ontario as represented by the Minister of Infrastructure to extend the County of Renfrew and Ontario Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, ISIP, transfer payment agreement until December 31, 2025. And again, the background is attached. Item 15, Official Plan Amendment Number 42, Township of McNabb Brayside, Resolution Number Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw to refuse the proposed Official Plan Amendment Number 42. Again, the background is attached. And finally, under bylaw, the amendment, which is a request for tender RE 2024-01-RP regarding Eaganville Paramedic Service Base Renovation. Resolution Number DP-CC-240114. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that contract RE 2024-01-RP, Eaganville Paramedic Service Base Renovation, as submitted by TS General Contracting Pembroke, Ontario, for the proposed retrofit at the new paramedic service base in Eaganville, Ontario, in the amount of $154,500 plus applicable taxes be approved. And further, that County Council adopt a bylaw to authorize execution of the contract. And the tender results are attached for your review. Thank you. And that is all, which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee Members Bennett, Eamon, Lynch, McKenzie, Service, Watt, and Weir.
Thank you. And move to item number one, comments, questions, concerns? Item number two, you'll see the correspondence from them. They're very complimentary of our interest and assistance. And then again, that was repeated on Monday evening when I attended a reception with Counselor Giardini and Counselor Doncaster. And so they were extremely complimentary of the county's support and efforts. Item number three. Item four, thank you very much to the Pembroke and Area Airport Commission. This is exactly what we wanted from them, just information on a regular basis. So it's very nicely done and appreciated. Item number five. Item number six. Number seven, some very interesting webinars, especially number eight, Tax Prep. It's always something that everybody needs to know about. Item number eight. Item nine. A member from Amos and Bromley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Probably drawing both items eight and nine together. And this harkens to the discussion at Budget Workshop as well. So on page 99, which is the Report of the Forester, revenues for 2023 were $200,000 at over-budget. Over-budget is a good thing when it is a revenue line, not so much when it is an expenditure. But in this instance, it's more than doubled at $381,000. And likewise, it is anticipated to be at least $100,000 more in 2023 than what our standing budget has been for quite some years. There was a very thorough explanation provided by Mr. Davis at the time that there is going to be some lean years, are going to be some leaner years moving forward, as there would be, given that a crop of timber has a much longer interval between harvests. However, at the time that we are experiencing this, I think it certainly should be celebrated that it is all not, the sky is falling. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number 10 and the Eastern Wolf Federal Uplisting. Item number 11, the future of the, or sorry, the future Eaganville Paramedic Base, the future of it is ongoing. Number 12, as was noted, the ministry did, I'm sorry, Amos and Bromley?
I think perhaps you were getting there. I just wanted to verify if I heard that, in fact, these have now been revoked or is it still under consideration?
It's still under consideration and we made comment on the registry. So the proposal was to revoke them, and the community is rallying with, like ourselves, offering support. And the member from McNabb Brayside.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for that clarification. I was going to mention that as well, too. So it's still in the works, the process. I just want to update council on a few things. When this came to Development and Property, we hadn't had our own council meeting, which was later that night, and we did pass a motion of support. Basically, it's a communication issue. There's a number of MZO's that the ministry was looking at across the province. And because there's no shovels in the ground yet, they were concerned there was no activity. So the township, as well as the principals, made submissions to the Environmental Registry of Ontario, clarifying all the background activity that's been done in preparation for breaking ground this spring. One other clarification, and we weren't aware of at the time, is there was two MZO's. So 53721 is the one with respect to Campbell Drive, which is the one that proponents want to continue. 53821, they're okay with that being rescinded. So that's been communicated to the ministry. But the important one is 53721, that's the property at 664 Campbell Drive. There has been substantial activity, as we all know, with all the studies that need to be done. That's right beside the highway, so there's noise studies and all the other environmental studies, and that's all being lined up. And township's working with them on access to the property and that sort of thing. So the MPP, John Akabusby, has been updated on the situation as well, too. And he'll make sure that the motion that we passed at McNabb Brayside and the input from staff here at the county is communicated to the ministry. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move to item 13. And you'll note that our Economic Development Division did institute a survey and had 42 responses. So we have surveyed our community to see what the state of the Union, I guess, was. So with that, move to item, oh, I'm sorry, the member from Whitewater.
Thank you, Warden. And I note the 42 responses, is that responses that indicate there's 42 with an outstanding loan that are seeking extension?
No, it was 42 in total. Forty-two responses in total to the survey. And I'm in a panic-stricken mood flipping through, trying to find the results. But we are content that we received good information.
Okay. The only other question was just, is there an opportunity to help bridge funding for businesses in Renfrew County using our Community Futures Development Corporation? Could they flip over the borrowing? Like, I'm just looking for avenues to support our local businesses that might be in a situation to repay these loans.
So my impression is CFDC was the issuer on behalf of the federal government. So there, but I'll ask Mr. Davis to clarify that for us.
Thank you, Warden. So any person can go to CFDC to look at what they can do. So it's kind of an indirect question. Again, look at that, if that's a possibility, but then look at their own banks, too, to flip those loans from that to a bank loan.
Okay, so I know my comment sparked a lot of interest, and I was probably wrong. So I'll start with Amos and Bromley and then Bonche Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I do not know how extensive the agencies through which these SEBA loans were facilitated. It was my understanding that it was commercial banks that were doing so. I don't know if CFDC perhaps had a role in that. I'm assuming that would even roll out perhaps to trust companies, et cetera. With respect to my colleague, Counselor Nicholson's comments, I would just urge caution. I don't know what the typical business model is of community futures development, and I would be very hesitant to alter, if you will, what is this kind of standard operating. I think that there's perhaps opportunity, as Mr. Davis has suggested, for individuals to be approaching. But I would be hesitant to take an institutional approach, that CFDC might have an avenue to be participating in this. I think that that would have to be on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, thank you very much for the clarity and for to expand on that. And also, if you have a chance, I know there's a question about forty-two respondents to the survey also, so if you have an opportunity to look at the Development and Property Committee report we did this month, they provided the information back to committees, so you see the specifics of who is, when they responded, who is still outstanding for these loans. And I think just to highlight one thing, twenty-four of the forty, twenty-four percent of the forty-two have repaid the loan in full. Again, you have a full descriptor of this in the DNP report as an example of the community at large in Renford County. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. And the survey, it was a, I met Ms. Markwart in the parking lot one morning and asked her, because I'd heard some, I'd heard from one person, and so she very quickly organized it and got it out. So it was lightning lightning quick response by us so that we have information to make decisions on. And Bonchar Valley, please.
Thank you, Warden. Although he said it in more words than I would have used, my comments were going to be the exact same as my colleague from Amos Bronley, and I know, but I do realize that some people sort of lost track of the deadline that was coming, and then it seemed to be an enormous story on the news for two to three days. So I imagine anything, you know, to help, especially with the survey, so that we're aware of where our, some of our businesses and our individuals are, is it's important for us to know that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did I see anybody else's hand? I don't believe I did. All right, thank you. With that, we'll move to bylaws, and item fourteen, item fifteen, and item sixteen. Seeing none, the report as a whole. And a mover, please.
So moved, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. So you've heard the report, you've heard the questions. With that, I'll call the vote, all those in favor? Opposed? None is carried, thank you very much. And we'll move to the Chair of Operations, please.
Thank you, Warden. Members of County Council, we are Operations Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Item number one, the always stop at Haley Station, and this is a carryover from the our November meeting. Back to staff, you'll see some of the options that are available and the recommended course of action. Item number two, County Road Thirty-seven, Murphy Road, road transfer, and you will see the background there from committee. Item number three, the winter operations for the the current stats for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four in table one and table two. Item number four, the twenty twenty-four municipal supplying services and the process of preparing the tenders for various procurement and maintenance materials and services, and that the letter has been sent out to local municipalities for participation. Resolutions, item number five, Declaration of Surplus Land, County Road Sixty-two, Cumberland Road, part of Lot One, Concession Six in the Township of Madawaska Valley. Resolution number OPCC twenty-four oh one oh four, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that County Council declare surplus to the needs of the county of Renford, the land identified as part of Lot One, Concession Six in the Township of Madawaska Valley, as illustrated on the attached sketch, and the background is there. Bylaws, item number six, Speed Limit Bylaw, update, resolution number OPCC twenty-four oh one oh two, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council passes Speed Limit Bylaw to revise the location for the sixty kilometer an hour speed limit on County Road Five Twelve. Foymont Road currently set from civic address thirty-four sixty-seven Foymont Road to Miller Road to reflect civic civic address thirty-four sixty-seven Foymont Road to Lake Clear Road, and further that a bylaw sixty-four twenty-two be repealed, and this is just the changing of the temporary reduction in speed during the reconstruction of of that road. Item number seven, bylaw to regulate the parking of vehicles on our adjacent county roadways, resolution number OPCC twenty-four oh one oh three, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council amend by law number sixty-five twenty-one for the regulation of parking along County Road to alter the regulations for parking along County Road Fifty-two Burnstown Road. And you will see is attached as appendix four, the request from McNab Brayside, and the background that goes with that. Item number eight, PWC twenty twenty-four oh seven, the rehabilitation of County Structure B zero zero seven Butler Bridge, resolution number OPCC twenty-four oh one oh five, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council approve the contract PWC twenty twenty-four oh seven as submitted by Bonchar Excavating Inc., Renford, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Structure B zero zero seven Butler Bridge in the amount of one million five hundred and sixty-four thousand seventy-one dollars plus applicable taxes, and further that the County Council adopt a bylaw to execute the contract. And you will see the the background there with the significant significant number of bids that were received by this. You will notice that this does come in over budget. Previously, we had a slightly higher budget that was reduced based on engineering estimates, and then we see that the tenders come in at about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars over what we had currently had budgeted. Number nine, culvert assumption C three three eight McMahon Road Culvert, resolution number OPCC twenty-four oh one oh six, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw to amend Schedule B of bylaw ten fifteen, being a bylaw to consolidate all bylaws with respect to roads and bridges, including the county road system, and add County Structure C three three eight McNab McMahon Road Culvert, excuse me, to the county road system effective February first, twenty twenty-four. And you will see the the background for that resolution, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members Bennett, Eamon, Lynch, McKenzie, Watt, and Wilmer.
Thank you, Chair. And for Council, comments, questions, concerns about item number one. Item number two, member from Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, just to give County Council an update on the progress that's been taking place on Murphy Road, I know I gave a detailed report during the budget session on why this was such an important project for the town of Petawawa and for the county as a whole as well. So I'm not going to rehash the safety concerns with the the four thousand kids we have every morning and every evening, walking to school or getting on and off buses, and on this particular stretch of road, having to walk on a small gravel shoulder, on a road which on a daily average has about three thousand vehicles. So Petawawa staff has been working with county staff, trying to find a way forward and some cost-saving measures. So just to update you, it's a five point seven million dollar project. The original proposal was that the town pays two point four, the county pay three point three. Earlier this week, our staff met with county staff and came up with a proposal for a fifty fifty share, as opposed to the original proposal, so two point eight seven million dollars each, which is a savings of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the county. As well, they, our staff has met with the engineers from JP Two G and talked about other avenues of cost savings. So earlier this morning, they looked at, there's a section that goes from Woodland to Dorn, which is a less urbanized section, and instead of doing a double lift of pavement there, just doing a single lift, and that would save an additional two hundred thousand dollars. And from Dorn Road to Petawawa Boulevard, the original plan was to go down to the B-level gravel, a more complete reconstruction of the road. So in order to save a little more money there, they've proposed just going down to the A-level, not so deep, and that would save an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What that doesn't take into account is the savings incurred with trucking, fuel, and labor by reducing the scope of the project, so there could be some further savings there. So that's an additional four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings, which brings down the total that we're still looking for, because right now it's budgeted in the county budget for one point five three seven million. So we're still looking, instead of looking for one point seven million, now we're down to eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we're still looking to find. What you may be asking is, are there any benefits to doing this project to the county? I mentioned some during the budget meeting. The fact that it's a double lift of pavement and a narrower footprint of road and putting stormwater in place will make this road last twenty to twenty-five years. And there is a geotechnical report, which I can share, that says if all we do on this stretch of road is pulverize and pave, if you're familiar with Murphy Road, there's the last eight hundred meters where Murphy comes down and hits the boulevard, there's quite a significant drop in elevation. So the drainage, well, there is no drainage, because of that elevation drop, it, there's heavy wear and tear in the road, not only from the vehicles, but from the drainage itself. So by putting the stormwater in, a narrower footprint, and a double lift of pavement, that'll make the road last twenty-five years. In the geotechnical report, it's saying is all you do is pulverize and pave, this road will need to be redone in ten years, as opposed to twenty and twenty-five. So I guess what I'm asking is that I propose that the staff of the town of Petawawa continue working with the operations staff here at the county to try and find further cost savings and a way to get this done this year, because if a project of this scope, five point seven million, gets deferred another year, we've seen what costs have been doing these last few years, and a project of this scope getting deferred could result in huge additional costs. Whereas if we were to find a couple of projects of lower value and they got deferred until twenty twenty-five, the expected increase in cost may not be as large as they would with a project of this scope. And I think I'll leave it at that.
Great, thank you. I certainly appreciate and admire the diligence of yourself and your and your staff and county staff. And what I would suggest is when when you think you've reached the perfect level, is if we could get a motion from your your council saying you want to go forward with the plan and with the with the estimate, and we'll we'll bring it back to operations with and have them consider it by, you know, whether they can move stuff around to make it work, and then it would come back to council. So if that's acceptable to you, that's what I would suggest would be a nice clean approach, and then we all know what information we're dealing with.
Thank you for that, and for sure, we'll bring something back to Council.
Great, thank you very much. Is there any questions or any further questions or comments? I'm sorry, I jumped in there, just trying to get a process. I'm a process kind of guy, I know I don't present as that, but I actually am. Seeing none, okay, thank you. And then we'll move to item number three, and item number four. So I would encourage everybody to to join in as best they can, and I'll just put this very subtle suggestion in, white trucks. Thanks. So with that, item number five. I, oh, I'm sorry, member from Amos Bronley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to perhaps to the Chair or in loop to the Director, the map on the sketch on page one forty-eight appears to show this, the boundaries of this proposed surplus land stretching across two properties, thirty-eight nine oh four and thirty-eight nine twenty-two, and I'm just wondering if if in fact it remains a single owner of both properties? It would be inappropriate if if surplus lands are being sold to a non-adjoning owner?
Thank you. Mr., oh, I'm sorry?
I'd pass that to staff.
Mr. Perkins?
Thank you, Warden, and through you to County Council. No, that's correct, that gentleman does own both adjoining property, so, yeah.
Thank you, and good question. Item number six. Item number seven. Item number eight. Member from Amos Bronley, please.
Thank you once again, Mr. Warden, and again, through you to the Chair or the Director as they see fit. I just wanted to comment on this, the pricing ultimately is the pricing. At the Budget Workshop, there was some concern, though it was, of course, noted that this is the first tender that has arrived, but that this was substantially over budget as it is, as it was presented this year in this year's capital program. It is in excess of four hundred thousand dollars over budget on a one point four million dollar task. However, this is the challenge for me, each year as we are approaching our budgets and our capital program, wherein we are told here is what it's going to cost in twenty twenty-eight and thirty, twenty thirty and twenty thirty-one, but it becomes fraught the farther out one goes. So in this instance, I certainly note that this year, this was budgeted for one point four million dollars. When our when our corporate asset management plan was first approved in twenty fourteen, this project was budgeted at one point three million dollars. When we budgeted for this project in twenty twenty-three, it was one point seven million dollars, and twenty thousand of those dollars were in fact spent, according to the variance report received in November, twenty thousand dollars was done on engineering, getting this project ready to go to tender. I acknowledge that in the comments today, particularly as as clarified by the the Chair, the budget estimate was reduced downward at the recommendation of the engineering firm that was engaged for the pre-engineering. However, I'm ultimately not disputing any of the numbers, they are what they are, but it shows you the incredible variability and the imprecision that we have in front of us, because there's no question, it is substantially over budget if the budget is one point four million, but it is eight point four percent over budget if the budget is one point seven million. So these are just things that this does not change, but it's the lens through which I approach, at the very least, and recommend and urge my colleagues to do the same, is that there is substantial variation within these numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions, comments on item number eight? Seeing none, item number nine, report as a whole. Could I have a mover, Chair?
So moved.
Thank you. You've heard the report, you've heard the questions, any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? None is carried, thank you, Council. And with that, I would suggest we take a break for lunch and resume here at one o'clock. Thank you. Thank you.
And with that, we'll resume with the Chair of Health.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. To the Council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we or Health Committee wish to report and recommend, as follows, as information items. Number one, the County of Renfrew Paramedic Service Community Programs, and this is a very extensive listing. You will now see the multi-vectored community paramedic program, which is essential in meeting the needs of our community. This is a very comprehensive overview of the various streams available through CP programming. Item number two is the Emergency Management Compliance, and we are compliant. As council will recall, the Health Committee is the owners of the plan, but we are not the Emergency Operations Group. That is a separate entity, but we are compliant with the requirements for 2023. Item three, Fixing Long-Term Care Act 2021, and the attestation that is required by both Mr. Blackmore and by Mr. Quad have been completed and submitted to the Province of Ontario. Item number four, short-stay respite care beds for 2024, and you, council, will note that we have restored some respite beds at Merrimashy Lodge. It continues to be a challenge at Bonnershire Manor, but we are fervently hoping that we are able to restore that, which is such an incredible value to our broader community, for, just as it says, some respite for those who are providing care at home. Moving on then, Mr. Warden, to resolutions. The renovation project at Bonnershire Manor, Bonnershire Manor Servoress, resolution number H-CC-24-01-05, moved by myself, seconded by committee, Manor 2023 capital budget to the Bonnershire Manor 2024 capital budget to accommodate the cabinet renovation project, and further that the Finance and Administration Committee be so advised, and the background is attached. Item number six, and I believe this will be recurring, is a leave of absence request, resolution number H-CC-24-01-011, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council accept the written leave of absence received from Councillor Valerie Yon until her return or up to three months, as per section 73D of our procedural bylaw. Again, the background is attached. Item seven, bylaws. Item seven, 2023/24 Virtual Care Programs Online Appointment Booking Agreement, resolution number H-CC-24-01-02, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw authorizing the warden and chief administrative officer clerk to sign the 2023/24 Virtual Care Programs Online Appointment Booking Agreement with Ontario Health. Once again, the background is there for council. It is important also to note, this is not VTAC, but it is rather through the Ottawa Valley Ontario Health Team. Finally, item eight, Mr. Warden, preauthorization for funding associated agreements, resolution number H-CC-24-01-03, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw authorizing the warden and chief administrative officer clerk to sign all agreements with respect to programs being delivered by the Ottawa Valley Ontario Health Team where agreements are necessary with funding agencies, including, but not limited to, the province, Ontario Health, et cetera, provided sufficient funds are in place with the OV OHT. Once again, the background is furnished for council's consideration, all of which, Mr. Chair, is respectfully submitted by myself as chair, along with committee members EMO, Grills, Murphy, Nicholson, Weir, and Wilmer.
Thank you, Chair. And to members of council, questions, comments, concerns? Item number one, item two, item three, item four. I'm sorry, a member from Whitewater, please.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to emphasize yet again on the importance of these short-stay respite care beds, and I applaud the effort of staff and Director Blackmore. Blackmore, did I get that right? Okay. This is such an important asset for us to have in our community, especially if we want our seniors to age in place and be able to stay in the communities that they've invested in for so long. So, thank you so much, and I think we just needed to recognize that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Oh, and Chair, please?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Just to perhaps add, I am likewise, as Councillor Nicholson has said, this has been very traumatic in our continuing now evolution out of COVID, staffing challenges, et cetera, though, of course, it is somewhat mitigated as we have continually expanded the community paramedicine program, including long-term care at home. So certainly kudos to our staff and the paramedic service, in addition to Mr. Blackmore and both the Manor and the Lodge, in evolving constantly and continually to meet the needs of our community.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, item number five, item six, we certainly extend our best wishes to Councillor Yon. Item number seven, item number eight. The report as a whole? Could I have a mover, please?
Mr. Warden, it was done with an economy of words, though I think it lacked a certain panache, but I have heard in this room constantly of how other councillors say it with fewer words, but there was no life to it. But just the same, it was done with an economy of words. I will so move.
Good. Thank you. Glad you got there. So you've heard the report, the comments and the questions and the observations. All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried? Thank you very much, and I do appreciate your efforts. Tireless efforts, yes. So with that, the Chair of Community Services, please.
Always a hard act to follow up on. To the Council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, your Community Services Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item number one, the 2024 Childcare Early On Child and Family Centers and Canada-wide Early Learning and Childcare Funding. Attached as Appendix One is the memo dated November 30th. There's a chart there, and the appendix just gives more information on that. Item number two, Ontario's Childcare Workforce Strategy. Again, attached as Appendix Two is the memorandum, and it speaks of the Ontario Childcare Workforce Strategy. Item number three, the Canada-wide Early Learning and Childcare Administration Funding. Attached as Appendix Three is the slide deck, and it outlines the changes, impacts, potential impacts, and key messages for service system managers throughout the province. For bylaws, number four, Amendment to Bylaw 49-17, County of Renfrew Licensed Home Childcare Policies and Procedures, resolution number CS-CC-24-01-02, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that County Council approve Bylaw Number 49-17 be amended, authorizing the County of Renfrew to approve the addition of a new policy to the licensed home childcare policies and procedures. And it is regarding the safe arrival and dismissal, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members EMO, Grills, Mayville, Nicholson, and Service.
Thank you, Chair. Comments, questions, concerns from members of council? Item number one, item number two, item three, a member from Anderson Bromley, please?
Thank you so much, Mr. Warden, and through you to, possibly to the Chair, but also invite Ms. Patrick. I found this to be a very comprehensive presentation, the PowerPoint presentation, but also quite disturbing. In reading through this, it seems that on more than one occasion, the province has recognized that this is not in the best interests of our broader communities, and that it is presenting a lot of challenges in the provision of childcare. I'm wondering if perhaps Councillor Giardini or Ms. Patrick can comment what on the impact of this diminishment on the County of Renfrew explicitly?
Ms. Patrick, please.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to County Council. With respect, I think, in the Budget Workshop, you know, we certainly, Mr. Burke did an excellent job of walking through the childcare budget, which is extremely complex, and the Ministry of Education has let us know that they are working on a new funding formula, which they hope to have out to us later this year and in place by 2025. But certainly, we, you know, recognize that some of the changes with regards to the administrative cost sharing and the reduction in the administrative funding, the change from the 10% to 5%, you know, is an impact to all municipalities. And through Budget Workshop this year, we did bring forward the recommendation that was followed to use some of the mitigation dollars through the childcare budget, but recognizing, as Mr. Burke indicated, that, you know, that will only last so long. So this is certainly something that we are working through and waiting to. There's a lot of advocacy going on. As the report reads, the OMSA is advocating on behalf of all of the service managers about the funding levels, and we're waiting to see what the new funding formula looks like and hoping that it accounts for the significant administrative workload increases as the municipal staff are rolling out the CEW program.
Thank you. And I think, oh, I'm sorry, a member from Bonnershire Valley?
Thank you, Warden. So this morning, Ms. Patrick, and I texted this to the Warden and to Mr. Kelly at 6:00 AM, there was an article on CB24 that says, "Province Orders Municipalities That Directly Operate Childcare Centers To Do Value-for-Money Audit." And so that was highly concerning, and I believe it was Margot that cleared it up, that it doesn't really affect us. But as always, I think that something like that could indicate a slippery slope into where the province is thinking about where childcare is going. And so I felt that even though it didn't necessarily directly affect us, better to be aware of it. And I wasn't sure if you had seen that this morning or not, but it did scare the bejeebers out of me. So, you know, at one point, at what point will the province say, "We're not in the childcare business, and that's worrisome"? Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, I'll move to item number four. The report as a whole? Can I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Thank you. You've heard the report, and the questions and answers and comments. With that, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried? Thank you, council. And we'll move to Finance and Admin. Please, Chair.
Thank you, Warden. To the Council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, your Finance and Administration Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Under information items, number one, legal services. We had spoken about this at a few different stages in the last month. We do have a relationship with solicitors on a retainer basis. We are, in fact, looking over that agreement and putting it out to other law firms to see where we might be able to find one firm for all of our needs. Number two, of course, is the Roma Annual Conference. We did have delegations with the Minister of Health, MMAH, Ministry of Tourism, Culture and Sport, Minister of Transportation, and SOALGEN, so a very successful conference. Under number three, we've got our CRA mileage rates, which are now 70 cents per kilometer for the first 5,000, 64 over the 5,000 kilometers. Number four, our insurance rates. Again, we have an increase of about 8% over our 2023 premium, which, believe it or not, is not too bad considering some of our neighbors, especially in eastern region. Number five is MPAC. Again, they're asking for more funding. I will be excited when they actually get around to the reassessments. Number six, the RC DHU 2024 funding, which we spoke about during budget. Number seven, the RC DHU, the Statement of Remuneration for 2023, for those of us that sit on the board. Number eight, Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the financial profiles for the County of Renfrew and the FIRs. Number nine, Town of Iron Priory Community Improvement Plan, which got a lot of conversation going at Finance and Admin. There is background there. Number 10, under resolutions, AMO Policy Update, resolution FACC 24-01-06, moved by myself as Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council supports the following resolution from the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. Whereas current provincial municipal fiscal arrangements are undermining Ontario's economic prosperity and quality of life, whereas nearly a third of municipal spending in Ontario is for services in areas of provincial responsibility, and expenditures are outpacing provincial contributions by nearly $4 billion a year, whereas municipal revenues such as property taxes do not grow with the economy nor inflation, whereas unprecedented population and housing growth will require significant investment in municipal infrastructure, whereas municipalities are being asked to take on complex health and social challenges like homelessness, supporting asylum seekers, and addressing the mental health and addiction crises, whereas inflation, rising interest rates, and provincial policy decisions are sharply constraining municipal fiscal capacity, whereas property taxpayers, including people on fixed incomes and small businesses, can't afford to subsidize income redistribution programs for those most in need, whereas the province can and should invest more in the prosperity of communities, whereas municipalities and the provincial government have a strong history of collaboration. Therefore, be it resolved, the Province of Ontario commit to undertaking with AMO a comprehensive social and economic prosperity review to promote the stability and sustainability of municipal finances across Ontario. And of course, there is background, but I think it speaks for itself. Number 11, Signing Authority, resolution number FACC 24-01-08, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council approve that signing authority for the Corporation of the County of Renfrew Bank of Montreal accounts be updated to remove Jeffrey Foss and add Gwen Dombrowski. Further, that two of the following four names have signing authority, Peter EMO, Craig Kelly, Daniel Burke, and Gwen Dombrowski. Number 12, the FCM Membership Dues, resolution number FACC 24-01-09, moved by myself as Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council approve the 2024 membership fee to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities in the amount of $23,859.16, including HST. Number 13, 2024 Membership to AMO, resolution number FACC 24-01-10, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council approve the 2024 membership fee to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario in the amount of $10,105.57, including HST. 14, the resolution from the City of Greater Sudbury, a resolution number FACC 24-01-12, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council supports resolution number CC 2023-033, passed by the Council of the City of Greater Sudbury on December 5, 2023, seeking an amendment to the Occupational Health and Safety Act to clarify the definition of employer, and further that this resolution be forwarded to the Honorable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, the Honorable Dave Pacchini, Minister of Labor, Immigration, Training, and Skills Development, the Honorable Paul Calandra, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Honorable John Yakubuski, Renfrew Nipissing Pembroke MPP, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, Ontario's big city mayors, mayors and regional chairs of Ontario, Northern Ontario large urban mayors, the Council of Ontario Construction Associations, the Ontario Chamber of Commerce, and all Ontario municipalities. And there is an appendix and background that's very important below. Number 15, Leave of Absence Request, resolution number FACC 24-01-17, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, the Council accept the written leave of absence received from Councillor Valerie Yon until her return or up to three months, as per section 73D of the procedural bylaw. And under bylaws, we have some corporate policies and procedures, which I'm sure the CAO will want to speak to. Resolution number FCC 24-01-13, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council approve the following amended corporate policies, A, A03 Recruitment, and B, J06 Return of Service Incentive Program, and the following new corporate policy, C, A19 Equity Diversity and Inclusion Policy, and the removal of the following corporate policy, and D, A09B Equality and Diversity, and further that a bylaw to amend by law 63-3, being a bylaw to establish human resources, corporate policies, and procedures for the County of Renfrew be adopted, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members Bros, Doncaster, Dennehy, EMO, Giardini, and Mayville. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Chair. Item number one, questions, comments, concerns by members of council? Item number two, just briefly, I think it was very successful, and I think when you take a look at the briefs that were submitted, you'll see the forward thinking and questions that were directed at the ministers and parliamentary assistants. Yes, a member from North Agona Wilberforce, please?
Thank you, Warden. And just to add to your comments, thank you to Development Property and, in particular, the Melissa's team for putting together that map of Ride the Trails. It was something that was the Trails. It was something that was very well received, and we got some positive comments from the parliamentary assistant. Thank you.
Yes, and I was going to mention the fact that it was a blended presentation, you know, representing Leonard County, Hastings, Halliburton, Lennox Addington, and us. And so it was quite an effort to put that together. So kudos to staff. It was very seamless, and we hit our marks. And then with that, we'll move to item number three. I think I'm already through my 5,000 kilometers, but we'll wait and see. Well, Daniel, let me know that. Item number four, item five, MPAC, item six, item seven, item eight, item nine. Member from Armpry, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd ask that be severed, please.
Sure. Item number 10, item 11, councillor from, or member from Adamston Bromley.
Apologies, Mr. Chair. This was with respect to item 10. And I could not more agree with this resolution before us, as I'd indicated. I think that this was even a sub-theme, if you will. The theme of the Roma Conference last week was closer to home. I think that this was a recurring theme throughout that may have been just under the surface of the closer to home. As part, the specific reason that I wish to speak to this, it has been some time since I have raised this, though it is no less unconscionable for having had a gap since, I think, 2015. Ultimately, part of this conversation has to absolutely engage on the farm and managed forest tax program. I'm not certain if this council has heard the comments on this, but it has been a recurring theme from me prior to me actually even becoming mayor of Admaston Bromley. In its former guise, so rather, the current guise is that eligible farm properties pay 25% of the residential tax rate. That's full stop. That is how property taxes work with respect to eligible properties. Prior to 2000, the way that it functioned was that the farms paid 100% of the residential tax rate and then were reimbursed from the Ministry of Finance of the Province of Ontario. When there was substantial uploading and downloading in the late 90s and even continuing in the early aughts, there was much change to how this program functioned. And in fact, that is when it was converted from the former regime into the new one, where farmers simply paid 25% of the eligible, on eligible farm properties of the residential tax rate. Keeping in mind that for their home plus one acre, they paid the residential tax rate as any other homeowner would. The challenge was that right up until 2013, the OMF program, the Ontario Municipal Partnership Program, continued to provide some funding through that vehicle to somewhat mitigate the change, but it was never whole. And in fact, in 2012, where it should have been ultimately three times what the farmer paid, it was in fact 17% of what the farm taxation, farm levy was in my community. In 2013, it was 19% versus 300%. And in 2013, the province finally acknowledged that they just had no interest in continuing the program at all. So because this resolution was going to be entertained today, I thought I would take a visit towards the 2023 levy year. So council will recall in September of every year, but just this past September, the Treasury Department of the County of Renfrew issued three different charts. One was showing tax rates across all of the lower tiers. One was showing levy and PIL revenues. So zeroing in on the PIL and levy revenues, if in fact the province was still making us whole, that is all municipalities, this is the cost to, or this is what would be received. Whitewater Region, the municipality of Whitewater Region, would be the single largest beneficiary receiving just over $1 million, $1 million and 26,000. My own township would be receiving $861,000. I can go right down through the list. Those are the top ones. But the County of Renfrew would be just under $2 million. That $2 million used to come to the county up until approximately 2000. Some diminished amount of money of that $2 million or less in prior years still continued up until 2013, and then it ceased completely, though there was a token reestablishment, I believe in 2017, that didn't come near to making whole. Ultimately, where I'm going with this is there is absolutely the value in incentivizing the production of food in our country. Our country is long overdue in developing a food strategy. This would certainly be a component within a sound food strategy. But where it is unconscionable is it is the ratepayers largely in Whitewater Region and in my community, which is almost $2 million, that the non-farming community is not contributing towards a food strategy. The ratepayers in my community are subsidizing food production, and largely in councillor Nicholson's. It is so in every municipality in this room, save Deep River and Headclara Maraya, which are showing zero farm tax levy. So ultimately, those two communities are indemnified from the shortfall. When this was done, it was suggested that there were points allowed in the education tax that offset this. Where that argument is unpersuasive is those points were awarded to every municipality, whether they had a large farm component or not. So the benefit of those tax points was felt broadly across the province, and yet again, it is the ratepayers of those communities overly represented with agriculture that are supporting this program. Mr. Warden, agriculture is an economic engine of Admaston Bromley. These properties, if they were rural, would be taxed at the residential rate. If in fact they were commercial, they would be two and a half times the residential rate. So the economic engine of my community in any other commerce, in any other sector, would be generating two and a half times the residential rate. This is generating 0.25%. It is appropriate to recognize the value of food production in our country. It is absolutely unacceptable that it is the ratepayers within those communities largely driven by agriculture that are in fact subsidizing and supporting food production in our country. That has to be a consistent message and a significant part of this conversation of reestablishing that fiscal balance of municipal provincial. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask you to write me a letter about that, and I will take it to the, to AMO? We were successful in getting the wastewater information into AMO, so it could be part of and might be part of the conversation with the province when and if they commit to the, that comprehensive social and economic prosperity review.
Thank you. I will do that. Thank you.
And I'm lobbying hard to get a seat at that table, so we'll see what happens. Bonner Valley, please.
And I think that it would absolutely go over very well at Roma. I think that we should definitely have that in our hands for the next Roma meeting.
Thank you. Moving forward to item number 11, item 12, item 13, item 14, item 15, and I'll ask the CIO to comment on item 16, please.
Thank you very much, Warden and Chair, for the acknowledgement. So I'm pleased that the council, well, first of all, committee has considered these, and council is considering them today. These represent an important step forward for this corporation. I'll go a little bit through them, or through them a little bit. The recruitment, one, just allows a little more flexibility, and it's all within budget, not to worry. When we run into trouble recruiting, it gives some flexibility to offer mild incentives to bring them here. We've had some troubles with recruiting some of our more technical positions, and this allows some flexibility to do that and following along in some of our strategies in our long-term care and some of the success we're seeing there. The Return of Service Incentive Program, that does extend it a little bit to, until the end of June, so we're happy to continue with that. And that's, for the most part, in long-term care. But item C is our new Equity Diversity and Inclusion Policy. With constant recruitment here at the County of Renfrew, we are seeing new faces, new people in roles that they haven't occupied before, whether gender-specific or people from different countries, or people that speak a word language, or English is their second language. And we're happy about that. So we felt as an SLT and in a group, sorry, SLT and several people in the corporation, we wanted to move this forward by creating a new DEI policy, which will roll out to a DEI committee, and will involve those across the corporation on how we can promote and make our place better, if you want to use that language, for those coming to the country and those wanting to work professionally in the government. So we are very pleased that this is being considered today and hope you will push this forward. Yes, we hope you push this forward. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, any questions and comments on the report as a whole, except item number nine. Mover, please?
So moved, Mr. Warden.
So I'll ask for the vote on the report with exception of item number nine. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to item number nine, and the member from Armpry, please.
Thank you, Warden. With your approval, I would like to provide a notice of motion to bring back the following resolution to the February 28, 2024 County Council Meeting. The County Council approves a request for participation in a brownfield remediation tax assistance program from the Town of Armpry for OVD Inc., owner of the property of 12 Thomas Street, Armpry, be approved to the following principles: a total grant payable value of 75% of eligible costs, not to exceed a maximum cap of $1,121,750,000, shared between the County of Renfrew and the Town of Armpry; two, the grant period being phased over a maximum of 10 years of development; and three, that the annual grant payable be set at 75% of the tax increment, new tax revenues less existing tax revenues, subject to the establishment of and in accordance with the terms and conditions of the Brownfield Remediation Tax Assistance Program Agreement; and further, that the Brownfield Remediation Tax Assistance Program Agreement and a bylaw be brought to a future section of County Council. Thank you, Warden.
Okay, thank you. So what I'll do is move that to the Notice of Motions, item 15. So item number nine, if anybody has a comment on number nine, then if not, we'll vote on it. All right. All those in favor of item number nine? I'm sorry, item number nine?
It's a notice of motion.
Oh, well, whoops, sorry. My apologies, because it is severed, and in theory, the notice of motion is coming at item 15, we don't have to vote. Sorry. I wasn't paying attention as diligently as I did.
There wasn't a lot of hands being raised, Warden.
Well, because everybody's looking at me like, hmm, what's he doing? Does he know what he's doing this week? All right, thank you. And so with that, we'll move to bylaws. And so I'll look for a mover and a seconder, that the bylaw, the following bylaws enacted and passed, and you see them on your list, A, B, C, D, down through to J. So bylaw 624, bylaw 724, bylaw 824, bylaw 924, bylaw 1024, bylaw 1124, bylaw 1224, bylaw 1324, bylaw 1424, bylaw 1524, and bylaw 1624, which was the amendment to the agenda. So with that, could I have a mover, please? A mover from Adamston Bromley, seconder from Madawaska Valley. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you very much. And written reports, oh, I'm sorry, closed meeting, my apologies. No, we'll go ahead with it right now. Yeah, I'm sorry. So closed, a motion pursuant to Section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of labor relations or employee negotiations, i.e. collective bargaining. So could I have a mover, please? Member from Petawawa, seconded by a member from Laurentian Hills. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And with that, Written Reports, Item Number Fourteen. We had an AMO meeting on Friday, and I just haven't had time to do it, I think, since then. So I apologize. Chalk River Stewardship Council?
No report, Warden.
Thank you. Eastern Ontario Regional Network?
My apologies, Warden. Our meeting was yesterday afternoon.
Thank you. FCM?
Nothing for this month.
Thank you. And Roma?
Everybody was at the conference. I'm just waiting to get the rest of the details so I can put it in a report. But I will say that it was a record Roma conference. There were eight hundred, 1,875 delegates at last count, which exceeds all other years. So thanks to all that attended, and I'll have a report for you next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Number Fifteen, Notice of Motion. So we had the motion from the member from Arnhem Prior. And Sixteen, we have written motions, and I'll ask the member from Whitewater to detail it for us, please.
Excellent. Thank you, Chair. And I'm just going to read this very long motion out for two reasons. One, we've made a small amendment. Gwen helped me out with the small amendment to the very last paragraph, but also just to stress the importance for anybody that might be listening or media that may want to wish to cover it. So, the topic is rural and small urban municipalities and the affordability of water and wastewater systems. Whereas, the provincial policy statement states that the municipal sewage services and municipal water services are preferred form of servicing for settlement areas to support protection of the environment and minimize potential risks to human health and safety, and that intensification and redevelopment within these settlement areas should be promoted. And whereas, the PPS states that planning authorities should protect, improve, or restore the quality or quantity of water by implementing the necessary restrictions on development and site alterations to protect all drinking supplies and designated vulnerable areas, protect, improve, or restore vulnerable surface and groundwater, sensitive surface water features, and sensitive groundwater features and their hydrologic functions. And whereas, the PPS states that there is consideration of environmental lake capacity as well as stormwater management practices. Whereas, the Ministry of Environment Protection and Conservation, a procedural guideline, states that the water quality which presently does not meet provincial water quality objectives should not be further degraded, and all practical measures should be undertaken to upgrade the water quality to the objectives. And whereas, in 2014, the Township of Whitewater Region authorized JP2G consultants to undertake a municipal-class environmental assessment for the purpose of evaluating viable options to upgrade the 1979 Cobden wastewater treatment plant. This plant did not meet guidelines for effluent flow into Muskrat Lake and Cobden wetland being highly sensitive at-capacity inland lake and provincially significant wetland, and acknowledged as one of the most eutrophic in the province, the plant had ongoing seasonal overflow events and was operating at maximum capacity. And whereas, in 2018, the Council of the Township of Whitewater Region approved the construction of a new parallel mechanical system that would meet all provincial environmental and regulatory requirements, including the accommodation of future growth. Federal and provincial contributions only covered 50% of the final construction costs, as there was no ability to renegotiate with federal and provincial partners once real costs were known. As a result, the balance of costs, $6 million, was debentured over 30 years at interest rates that are slightly punitive to rural and small urban municipalities. And whereas, in 2019, the Council of the Township of Whitewater Region conducted a water and wastewater rate study that demonstrated the need for rate increases of over 100% to fund the new wastewater treatment plant construction debenture and the significantly increased operating costs for a parallel mechanical system. Rural and small urban municipalities experience very limited growth, as federal and provincial policies heavily support growth in urban centers. As there are no other sources of available operational funding, rural and small urban municipalities are expected to fund the construction and operation of these state-of-the-art systems from existing property owners and nominal forecasted growth. And whereas, in 2023, the Township of Whitewater Region combined water and wastewater rates have risen to almost $3,000 per year for its 511 users, and are amongst the highest in the County of Renfrew and across the province of Ontario. There are significantly high rates, user rates, in the Township of Madawaska Valley as a result of provincial regulations and a small number of users. Other examples of rapidly increasing rates includes the Town of Deep River and Renfrew, where significant upgrades in short periods of time are making rates unaffordable, even with an increased number of users. Now, therefore be it resolved that the County of the, the Council of the County of Renfrew advocate to the province and the federal levels of government to make them aware that rural and small urban water and wastewater systems are financially unsustainable, and advocate to AMO, Roma, and FCM to examine if the unaffordability of water and wastewater system operational costs is systemic provincially and nationally, and that a copy of this resolution be circulated to the Honorable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, the Honorable Kinga Sirma, Ontario Minister of Infrastructure, the Honorable Dominique LeBlanc, Minister of Intergovernmental Affairs, Infrastructure and Communities, John Jakobuski, Parliamentary Assistant to the Minister of Environment, Conservation and Parks, AMO, Roma, FCM, and all municipalities in Ontario.
Could I suggest you add MP Galant to that as well?
And so be it.
Thank you. Your first major is public speaking event. Thank you. So what, the member from Bonshaw Valley, please?
Well, number one, Warden, bravo. Mayor Nicholson, bravo. I will say that not only were we able to bring this to the Roma Board, albeit very late, in 2023, as you are well aware, in the Zone Six meeting, I'm not sure if it happened in other zones, but this was of enormous concerns to the delegates in these, in the Roma Zone Six Room, and I think that this is something that we should be supporting. I know at this time, my own municipality, we're making it work, but we're not going to be able to do that for much longer. And I know that my friend from Madawaska Valley is also having issues in his municipality. I am a water user in the Town of Renfrew, and those rates have jumped considerably at our business. So, bravo. I am, I am so totally behind this. I will have your back at every moment. So, thank you, Neil. Thanks, Warden.
Thank you. And the member from Laurentian Hills, and then did I see Deep River? And then Deep River?
Yes, the Town of Laurentian Hills also supports this. Just last week, we had to hold a public meeting informing the, how many, 461 users on the Chalk River Water System, that there is a project for $836,000 to replace one water filter. It's a necessary, it's absolutely necessary, since the filter has to be, had been, has been taken offline since May, and it's above and beyond their normal water bill. And this is only going to get worse. There are only so many reserves that you can save for, but with increasing costs for maintenance, replacement of aging infrastructure, I fully support all the advocacy that we can do. Thank you.
And Deep River, and then Petawawa?
Thank you, Warden. Yes, I would just ask that the, the resolution that's just been read out, assuming that we endorse it, gets forwarded to us separately. I have, I have put a placeholder in the Ontario Caucus meeting for FCM that will be happening in March on this topic, and I have provided some of the background information that the Township of Whitewater and councillor Nicholson have put together. Certainly will be bringing it there. I believe that this certainly aligns with the FCM policy that is advocacy on dedicated funding for rural water and wastewater projects, but it's currently, the focus is on, on capital funding, and I think that this would, I think that it wouldn't be very difficult for us to add into that advocacy based on, you know, the trends that we're seeing, I believe, across the country, but certainly in Ontario, around the increasing in operating costs that are just unsustainable. So, I will certainly be bringing this to, to our next round of meetings and to the Board of Directors in March also. Thank you.
Thank you. Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Warden, through you, and thank you very much for bringing this forward, Mayor Nicholson. It's timely for sure, and I'll echo the sentiments of councillor from Deep River. We'd like you to send this to each municipality so that we can support it on an individual basis. And I noticed there were some municipalities listed in your motion here, and I think you could really include any municipality in this county that has a water or wastewater system. We are a growing community, but when we look ahead to what we might have to do based on the growth that we're experiencing, it's quite frankly frightening to think of the upgrades. Right now, our wastewater treatment plant is at 80%, and that's without all of the additional growth that's coming our way. And it is frightening to think of how much it's going to cost either upgrade or build a brand-new facility. And we're not growing at the rate where we can put that on the backs of our ratepayers. So, excellent issue, and thanks for bringing it forward.
Thank you. And councillor Wilmer, please. From Madawaska Valley.
Thank you, councillor Nicholson, for bringing this forward. I too appreciate it. And I think councillor Murphy said it best about our present situation, in that we are surviving, we're making it work, but we know that we're one step away from any problems. So, I appreciate all the work that you've put into this, and we will definitely be supporting this.
Thank you. And just as a, I'm sorry?
For all of you without water and wastewater systems, could you also pass this at your council tables? Because I'm looking around, and there are a lot of people going, "Whew."
Thank you. So, and the member from Horton, please.
Sorry. Through you, I'd just like to go a little bit further with councillor Murphy's comments. Whether we have water or sewer or not, in almost all our municipalities are being restricted on what we can redevelop, and what we can actually develop that's cost-effective. And we look at our neighboring municipalities, and when we're close to them, that we could be tied into them. So, this reflects on everybody, of how much cost is really involved cooperating with your next-door municipalities, or what we can do in our smaller municipalities to actually have water and sewer. And it is very difficult to not support this. I would be fully supporting whatever we can do to have this funded by the government to much more extent. And take away from councillor Nicholson's comments, it's the people that are actually using the service. Right now, the cost to them, when you split it between 500 people, or 600 or 800 people, the cost is prohibitive of what that growing municipality can do to begin with. So, I certainly, with mayor Murphy's comments, would certainly support this at the rural level as much as we possibly could. Thank you.
Thank you. And would you accept a friendly amendment that when the final version of this is printed, that you will add in, with Arnhem Prior's permission, then Petawawa's already given permission, and Laurentian Hills to your, to your motion? And Bonshaw Valley? Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So, and I'd like just to inform a little bit that when we made the presentation of Roma, it was accepted for conversation as part of our work plan for March of this year, March and April. So, it's coming back to the board. It was two of the items that will be discussed. AMO has put it in, has parked it for the larger discussion with the province. I, I'm worried discussions like that are like labor negotiations, where you go with 10 things and four get lost. So, to help AMO along with their advocacy, I've talked to Phonam, and Osam, and Noma, and have asked them to survey their membership to try and get more case studies, so that when I go back to the board, to the AMO board, when I bring it back at some point in the future, that I have a fairly extensive list so that they'll recognize the gravity of it. And just to, real quickly, what we submitted to Roma and through Roma to AMO has been that AMO, through a survey of Ontario municipalities, and with the assistance of the other municipal groups, determined the number of municipalities that are struggling with operating their wastewater and water systems due to the limited number of users, and in consultation with AMO devised a system of dispersing water, surcharge revenue to Ontario municipalities who operate water and wastewater systems in a fashion that replicates the Canada Community Building Fund methodology, which is the old gas tax. And then petitioned the Ontario Government to establish a five-cent surcharge on the estimated 1.5 billion bottles of carbonated, colored, unflavored, and flavored water sold annually in Ontario. It is estimated Canadians drink nearly a billion liters, or nearly 75 liters of bottled water each year. And the formula distributing the funds would use an algorithm which uses, sorry, uses strata weighted heavier to municipalities of less than 1,000 users, and with 5,000 users and 10,000 users being the next cutoff, and larger systems receiving some funds as well. And the five cents would be distributed with a, with four cents funding to the operating or capital grants, and one cent of all funds collected of the five cents would be distributed with an application-based funding stream model for stream and watershed revivals or rehab. So, we thought it would be something that would, first of all, put more revenue in, and it would be, it wouldn't be an imposition on, on, on the province, because the money would be paid for by water consumers. And if it drove some of the water consumers back to the water systems, that would be a good thing, because all of our, I'll call it gallonage, but everybody's gallonage is going down, and that's what we based a lot of our financial projections on. So, anyway, this will come to, to AMO and Roma, and it may, it may go through some of the other municipal associations. I've had good conversations with them about it, and I've sent it out, and have a couple of Zoom calls scheduled to just explain it. So, we're going to keep trying. Thank you. And the member from Whitewater?
First, I just wanted to thank you, Chair, and all the other members of council who, you know, who are supporting this. I appreciate it. And I know it's not going to apply to every single one of the members of County Council, but I think as a group, it reflects our urban stance on growth and supporting growth. I just wanted to add one other piece of detail. There's a, there's a study that has been done of 122 other municipalities in the province of Ontario, and it's done by BMA Consulting, an accounting firm. And they reviewed a number of different comparators amongst these 122 municipalities that represent about 86% of the population. One of their comparators is water and wastewater rates. And when they compare those rates as a, as a percentage of average household income, the average across about 86% of the population is 1.1% of a household income is applied to water and wastewater. The highest numbers that you see come in around early 2%, 2%. And we're talking, as you come further east, the rates raise a little bit higher. Whitewater Region right now is just over 3%, projected to go to 4%. Now, I don't have the stats for the other communities. I wasn't able to get them for the meeting. I the meeting. I will and will be able to distribute it, but I think it'll be very clear that Renfrew County, as a percentage of our household income, disproportionately pays for these types of services. And that's the point that I think we need to echo loud and clear to levels of government and our different organizations. So just a point. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. So with that, any comments beyond that? And I will call the vote. All those, oh, sorry, you need a second or, member from Bonshire Valley, thank you very much. Why do I think that was staged?
Can I ask for a recorded vote?
A recorded vote, perfect. Thank you.[1321.51][1321.51](Laughter.)
So we're just getting our systems fired up.
Just wait till we get to adjournment.
You're going to do a recorded vote on adjournment?[1369.11][1369.11](Laughter.)
Getting out of here early.
There you go.[1372.65][1372.65](Laughter.)
Member for Deep River, please.
Push the button. Thank you, Warden. So just based on the resolution that councillor Nicholson had read out, you had asked for yours to be added as an amendment to that. Did we accept that? So are we voting on the whole thing?
I'd suggest it was a friendly amendment.
Was that accepted?
He accepted it, I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
And sorry, Warden, just to be clear, that was just the addition of the other municipalities within?
And Miss Galant.
And Miss Galant, yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
All right, folks. I think we've got a couple of systems running here, just to double-check my math. So as councillor Nicholson was the mover of the original motion, I shall start with councillor Nicholson. How do you vote?
In favour.
He asked for the recorded vote, but councillor Nicholson was the mover of the motion, the original motion.
In favour.
Thank you. And then alphabetically, councillor Bennett?
In favour.
Thank you. Councillor Bros?
In favour.
Councillor Doncaster?
In favour.
Councillor Donoghue?
In favour.
Ward Nemo?
In favour.
Councillor Giardini?
In favour.
Councillor Grills?
In favour.
Councillor Yon, councillor Lynch?
In favour.
Councillor Mackenzie?
In favour.
Councillor Mayville?
In favour.
Councillor Murphy?
Emphatically in favour.
That gets one vote still. Councillor Service?
In favour.
Councillor Watt?
In favour.
Councillor Weir?
In favour.
And councillor Wilmer?
In favour.
Thank you. The vote passes unanimously, 214 to 0.
It's amazing. You used 10 words, you still only get one vote.[1506.01][1506.01](Laughter.) Next, new business, we have the member from Armpire, please. Thank you very much for that, council.
Thank you, Warden, a little bit on the lighter side. From 01 to 23rd of February, the Canadian Health, Mental Health Association Fund is doing fundraising with push-ups. So not only are they doing fundraising that way, it's a personal health challenge to get your body better in shape, and we're throwing that out to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And member from North Agona?
Thank you, Warden, and just wanted to let everybody know and you're invited this weekend in Eganville is the only snowmobile pro-circuit race event that is coming for Saturday and Sunday, and would like to invite you all to attend if you can. Thank you.
And Mr. Seale?
Thank you. So you've heard at different committees, councillor Yon has petitioned this council for leave of absence for three months. Committee has provided that direction at those committees, but again, for county council, if you could please consider that petition for that leave of absence, that would be considered by councillor Yon.
So mover and a second for that, please. Madawaska Valley, second, Laurentian Valley. Got that right. Discussion? Abson Bromley.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Just for clarity, I'm presuming that this three-month period will not commence until the expiration of the unrequired else. This is simply overlapping with the permitted absence.
So, yeah, I can clarify that a little bit to councillor Donoghue through you, Warden. So council should be familiar with the procedural bylaw that allows any council member to miss up to three meetings. After missing three meetings, your position on council shall be considered. So what councillor Yon is now asking for in advance of her absence, or in advance of that happening, is a leave of absence. It has been noted and commented that she could wait, councillor Yon could wait until the day before that third absence and ask for that, but again, she is anticipating that she will be away from municipal business for, including this month, up to three months and beyond.
Okay, thank you. So this is three months, not six months?
She has asked for three months.
Yeah, got it. Okay. So, and I had the impression, the gist of the conversation was the three months that we're entitled to under the municipal act with a punishment and then three more, but this is three months in total at this time?
Correct, Warden, what she's asking, she's just doing it in advance of being, just to clear her mind or her plate of other items, just to deal with this right up front.
Okay, thank you. Comments, questions? All those in favour? Opposed, none, it's carried, thank you. And the conservatory bylaw, that bylaw, 1724, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the County of Renfrew at the meeting held on January 31, be now numbered, deemed red three times and passed. Mover, please. Member from Armpire, second, member Laurentian Hills, discussion? All those in favour? Opposed, none, it's carried, thank you. And with that, we will accept the motion for adjournment, please. And member from Whitewater, second by member from Madawaska Valley, discussion? All those in favour? Opposed, no, it's carried, thank you.